Mayor, go ahead, your life.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 2, 2021 Glendale City Council meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and charter cable channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandalc.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please don't call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Ajayian. I will lead the flag salute. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ajayian.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, we thank you for the life you have allowed us to lead and the privileges you have provided. Let us not take these advantages for granted, but use our lives and resources according to your will. Be with each of us in our daily lives that we present ourselves in a matter that is pleasing to you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item, please.
The agenda for the March 2, 2021 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on February 24, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Three would be presentation and appointments. 3A, agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, March 9, 2021, by John Toktalian, our deputy city manager.
Mr. John Toktalian.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council. Next week, we will have a special City Council meeting in the afternoon with one item on the agenda, and that's going to be from community development regarding an economic development update on business recovery strategy grant programs. The council meeting in the evening will commence at 6:00 PM. There's a number of consent items. At 4B will be a report from Water and Power regarding a professional services agreement with Owners Engineering Services for the development of clean energy and storage resources, as well as a study of the impact of distributed energy projects on the city's electrical grid. That report will be followed by another one from the Police Department, where we'll be seeking authorization to accept grant funds in the amount of $15,088, which will be used for the purchase of automated license plate reader equipment. And finally, a report from Public Works regarding the traffic signal installation and modification project at various locations. Under action items, Public Works will provide three separate reports. The first will be regarding architectural and engineering services for the Glendale Central Libraries Youth Services renovation project, followed by a contract amendment for the fuel kiosk maintenance and repair project. And finally, at 8C will be their final report regarding amendment to construction contract for the Beeline Maintenance Facility for the addition of photovoltaic systems. And the final report of that evening will be from Community Development regarding an award of a vendor contract for the Shared Mobility Pilot Program. That concludes next week's preview.
Thank you. Next side, please.
Next item is 3B, appointment of boards and commission member by Councilmember Kasakian, Shauna Bonstein, Transportation and Parking Commission.
Mr. Kasakian, if you want to say your word.
Of course. Yes, thank you. Many of the nominees I brought forth to you this evening would have liked to say a few words, but in the interest of time, I've decided to speak on their behalf. It gives me a little bit more latitude to brag about them. The first nominee for TPC is Shauna Bonstein for our Transportation and Parking Commission. She's an urban planner. She's a deputy director for the Los Angeles Department of City Planning. She manages the Community Planning Bureau and oversees land use and planning policy at the neighborhood and community level for Los Angeles. She's worked for over 20 years there and has extensive experience in the review of development projects, particularly how transportation gets incorporated into it. Much of her work involves how transportation and land use planning interrelate, which is what I was seeking in someone to appoint to this commission. Shauna is a chief sustainability officer for her department as well, I should mention this, and supports students learning about urban planning and oftentimes coordinates these efforts with the elementary to graduate school level students. Her educational experience includes a BA from the University of California, Santa Cruz. So if there's any banana slug fans out there, she studied environmental studies at UC Santa Cruz and holds a master's from Harvard University's Graduate School of Design and Urban Planning. Shauna is a walker, a hiker, and in Glendale and drives an electric vehicle. And I'm very proud to bring her nomination forth for your approval.
Thank you. So the candidate is not present, or?
No, no. None of the candidates this evening are. They are watching from home.
Okay. All right. Do I have anybody to?
It doesn't require a second. I bring forth the nomination.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes. The next nominee.
Appointment of board and commission member by Councilmember Kasakian, Rondi Warner, Sustainability Commission.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, I would like to appoint the final member of the Sustainability Commissions where they can get their work underway. And I couldn't think of a more, a better person to appoint to this than Rondi Warner, who has been very active, obviously, in the homeowners coordinating council, has represented Adams Hill on a number of issues. But what most people may not know is that she has extensive experience doing environmental work as well. She has worked at Walt Disney for a number, at the Disney Corporation for a number of years, in particular, doing outreach while working in the Disney Corporation Environmental Policy Department. She promoted the environmentality through environmental outreach events, helped organize and participate in environmental fairs and engage civic partners throughout Glendale and Anaheim, including our own Glendale Water and Power. She, on transportation, she helped administer Disney's commuter transportation program, which incentivized employees to reduce greenhouse gases by leaving their cars at home. Wrote the department's mission statement on that. Sustainability design and green procurement is also another area where she has experience. And we've talked about greener purchasing policies. She was a project specifier at Walt Disney Imagineering. And you can imagine the size of that company trying to figure out how to reduce the carbon footprint of a lot of the transactions that are done. She greened the Disney Master Guide specifications to make it easier to identify and compare sustainability characteristics of building materials, evaluated building products for sustainable criteria, and performed cradle-to-cradle lifecycle analysis of products, systems, and assemblies. Worked with the Walt Disney Imagineering Mechanical Engineering Studio to incorporate additional sustainability criteria into their standard of practice. I think she will be a great addition to this commission. As you can see, she's amply qualified. And with that, I bring forth her nomination for your approval this evening.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes. Next candidate, please.
D would be appointment of boards and commission member by Councilmember Kasakian, Armie Gavadisian, CDBG Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With this final appointment that I've brought forth today, I'm proud to bring forth the name of Armie Gavadisian, a name that's familiar to many. He's already been serving on the CDBG. He's a 40-year resident of Glendale, a parent of two daughters, both products of our local schools and of Glendale Community College. He's a Realtor by trade, an active member of the association. And he was its president in 2011 and was named Citizen of the Year by the Association in 2014. He served on the GCC Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for six years, and I believe four years as chair, and for Measure GNGC. Also, she's on the Glendale Unified School District Oversight Committee as well. Advisory member for the Local Salvation Army and a board member of the Glendale Armenian National Committee. He has been serving on the CDBG Commission and is its current chair. He has done an outstanding job of balancing the committees that boards, or the community needs, rather, with the challenges of, as we will soon see, the diminishing resources. And it is for this reason that I would like to reappoint him and ask you for your vote.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is item number E, Arbor Day Proclamation.
Okay, I guess. All right. This is the proclamation from City of Glendale, and I will read the content of it. Whereas in 1872, of course, this is proclamation, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the granting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Verj Agajanian, mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim March 2, 2021, as an urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Arbor Day, Verj Agajanian, Mayor, March 2, 2021. And this is the proclamation for this event. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Golanyan.
Yeah, Mayor Agajanian, members of City Council. We have Lauren Klick on the call this evening to accept the proclamation.
Okay.
And I'll see if we can, he wants to say a couple of words.
I hope so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and happy Arbor Day to everybody. Obviously, it's a shame we're not able to meet in person today to celebrate the event, but I'm happy to share that our planting events have continued regardless with Public Works and Glendale Beautiful's annual donation memorial trees across their city parks. I also want to point out, we have a special ongoing project called the Glendale Tree Stories. We invite everybody to visit our city's Instagram account, MyGlendaleToday. You can see a special Arbor Day post from the Glendale Beautiful and their story of their foundation. And of course, this program is just getting underway, where our neighbors share stories about the important trees in Glendale that they care about. And you can submit your own story at glendaleca.gov/GlendaleTreeStories. We have a great response so far. We're just getting started. We're hoping to have some displays in our parks and public buildings very soon. And of course, next year, we're looking forward to returning to our in-person events with everybody present. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, and hopefully, see you next year.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr.
Councilmember Najarian first, and then I'll follow him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, this is a rather unusual Arbor Day, as we all know, but it certainly isn't the same sitting out there at the Casa Adobe with Roberta Medford's homemade crumb cake and the Wisemen's and everyone from the Glendale Beautiful organization, listening to the dedication of the trees that are being made and enjoying a little camaraderie in support of our environment. So, sorry, folks, I miss you this year, and look forward to it next year.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Councilmember Kasakian, are you going to say?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, I want to give another plug to those tree stories that are on Instagram. They've come up in my feed, so the algorithm is working. And I got to tell you that it's really phenomenal to see some great individuals and their stories related to what makes our trees and our community so green and so special highlighted. I was delighted to see Doris McKentley, my fourth-grade teacher from RD White, featured. She was a caretaker for the Catalina of Verdugo Adobe. It actually used to belong to her family and is the home of the Oak of Peace, which is where an incredible, important treaty was signed in 1847, ending the conflict between Mexican settlers and the California settlers. And her story was highlighted. It was also great to see Mark Sturtemann highlighted in that and a number of other folks in the community that we all know well. So if you don't have Instagram, it's worth getting Instagram just to see these tree stories. So thank you and happy Arbor Day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. What's next, please?
Or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve these items?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you.
All second.
Thank you, Councilmember Kasakian, and Councilmember, Councilmember Devine. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes. What's next, please?
Mayor, I do believe we're moving the hearing items before the other items.
Yes, I have been asked to move the hearing before action items, so people, they can, they don't have to stay here for a long time. So I will be moving items.
9A and 9B.
9A and 9B, okay.
Would you like me to read 9A, Mayor?
Yes, please, 9A.
Nine hearings, 9A, Fire Department, regarding public hearing for the 2021 Annual Weed Abatement Program. One motion to approve abatement, order directing the Agricultural Commissioner, Director of Waits and Measures, to abate the nuisance on each declared parcel.
Fire chief is here, or, yes, fire chief.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of council. Sylvia Alonsis, your fire chief. If you would be so kind to just open the hearing and see if we have any callers or anybody that would like to call in.
Do we have any callers on item 9A?
No, Mayor, we do not have any callers.
Why we don't read the item again, so maybe they were wait, they did not know that we're going to move this item to the.
Item 9A, again, is Fire Department, regarding public hearing for the 2021 Annual Weed Abatement Program. One motion to approve abatement, order directing the Agricultural Commissioner, Director of Waits and Measures, to abate the nuisance on each declared parcel.
Okay. Still, we don't have any caller.
No, Mayor, no callers.
Okay. Chief Lanza, do you want?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe we just need to open the hearing and close it. I'll kill a little bit more time just by mentioning that this year's declaration list, we have 618 properties that were on the list. They were posted several weeks ago. And I do have Fire Marshal Jeff Ragusa also available to answer any questions, should anybody call in, as well as a representative from Los Angeles County Department of Agricultural Commission Waits and Measures. They're both available to us.
Okay. So we opened the hearing, and who's presenting?
That, I mean, that was the presentation. So all I have to do is open and close the hearing, because I don't think there's any callers. And then we can go forward with the motion, Mr. Mayor.
There is no caller, so we are closing the hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll move the item at 9A.
Hearing is closed, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes. So for item, the next item, would you read it?
Yes. The next item, which is 9B, Community Development, regarding public hearing on Appeal of Design Review, Board Case Number PDR 2004976, located at 2941, 2943 Honolulu Avenue. One motion to continue the Design Review Board Appeals Case to March 23, 2021.
Thank you. I have to recuse myself because I have a conflict, apparently. City Council, Garcia? I'm sorry. City Attorney, Mr. Garcia, do I have a conflict?
I believe that this, on this particular project, you received a contribution from the applicant, yes, sir.
All right, so I leave this hearing, and I will come back.
Mayor Protam, as Councilmember Najarian.
So we're doing 9.
B.
B. I know, because you had a couple of conflicts. 9B. Why don't we jump ahead to 9B at this point and not save that?
I think because the request from staff is to continue that item till the 23rd. So if you have any speakers, Mr.
You read that in the record, huh?
I did. I can read it again.
No, it's okay. So if you have any.
No, it's written to the record, 9B. We have a, is there a request from council to honor staff's request to continue this to March 23, 2021?
I will move that we continue to March 23. But does staff want to go through their reasoning on that, so that everybody understands what we're doing?
Phil, you're muted.
We can't, we can't hear you, Phil. The council had continued this, asking that the applicant revise their plans to show how they would satisfy the conditions of the Design Review Board. Those plans did not get to us until Monday of this week, I'm sorry, Monday of last week. And they were, just on a preliminary review, they were still deficient. So staff would like to push this forward so that we can get a full set of plans for you. We can do it a full analysis and then give you our best recommendation. We do not have a meeting on the 16th, so that's why we pushed it to the 23rd.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay, so I'll.
Mr. Protam made the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Mr. Mayor Protam, I don't know if you have any speakers to, they could speak just on the, on the request for the continuance.
Do we have any speakers, Mr. Agajanian?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay. So let's take roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Najarian?
Yes. Bring the mayor back.
Okay, now we go to action items?
No, Mayor, we will go to item number five.
Number five.
Which is city council.
Right, right, I'm sorry.
They stopped me from going that far, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna take over, but they said.
All right, we go to item number five, City Council comments. Is there any comments by my, Ms. Councilmember Divine?
Thank you. I made this announcement this afternoon at the Housing Authority, but I'd like to make it again this evening for all of those renters out there that might be watching. The Door of Hope, the local nonprofit serving those who are homeless and working to prevent homelessness. Well, they have Measure H funding available for Glendale residents only to assist families in paying rent. Families who have a history of being unable to pay rent and families with an eviction or series of evictions even before COVID can provide, who can provide proof are eligible for rent, for rental and utility assistance. You can call this number at the Door of Hope, 626-304-9130 to apply. However, our Housing Authority Department is going to be sending out a blast of over 24,000 emails to those who on, who are on our accounts. So look for those, look for that information coming at you in the near future. I want to also announce that March is International Women's Month. And so I just want to say to all the gentlemen and folks out there to do something special for the woman in your life this month. And finally, I've received a few emails regarding the hate crimes being perpetrated on the Asian American Pacific Islander community in our country, and I suppose all of us have received those. And I am, of course, deeply saddened by these acts of violence against innocent people because of bigotry, racism, or just pure hate. I want to tell our Asian American Pacific Islanders community that I stand with you against this type of behavior. You are welcome and respected in our community. Let's not let this behavior become a part of our community. We've worked too hard to recognize our past as a racist city. So I stand and let's all stand in solidarity with our Asian American Pacific Islanders community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other, Councilmember Najarian?
Councilmember Najarian, we can't hear you. Councilmember Najarian, we can't hear you.
I, thank you. I, I wasn't sure this was going to be a relevant issue at this point, but I do want to raise it and perhaps place a placeholder on next week's agenda. The, the mayor of Boston, Boston, Massachusetts, Marty Walsh, issued a proclamation commemorating something that he called as Kojali Massacre Day, containing denigrating remarks against the Armenian community in Artsakh and around the world, essentially. He, his staff has walked that proclamation back, attempted an apology at it, but I would like to have this on the agenda if, if it appears that that apology is not fully expressed and this proclamation retracted. I would like to ask that we put this on the agenda so that the city of Glendale issue a letter to him condemning his one-sided remarks regarding a conflict during, during which lives were lost on both sides.
Yeah, I second it if it's needed.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comment by council members? Mr. Brotman, Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things. Firstly, there, I want to, I want to mention a, a program that we've all heard and read about, but members of the public may not be familiar with, called the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program. It's a new program. It's offered by the California Department of Insurance, which is state of California, and comes out of some legislative activity in 2019. And what it does is provides low-cost auto insurance to low and moderate income drivers, regardless of their immigration status. And in addition to providing, you know, needed financial relief, it could reduce instances of uninsured drivers, which I think we all know is one contributor to hit and runs. So this is a good program for members of our community that are eligible, and the insurance department is asking that we help get the word out. I know that interim city manager Galanian is already on it, and he might want to say a few words about that. I would just say that, you know, my, my ask would be that we get a little creative in, in, in our outreach because we, we have to get to a hard-to-reach segment of the community. And I would suggest we work through some community groups like the Tenants Union, perhaps Armenian Relief Society, or some other Armenian groups, the Glendale Latino Association, maybe some of the Filipino and Korean churches, other community groups, perhaps also the Verdugo Job Center, I'm not sure. I'll leave it to staff to figure out what the best channels are. But I think if we could push it out, and, and Councilmember Divine just mentioned an email blast on the Door of Hope program, this may be targeted to some members of, I mean, some members of that community may benefit from this as well. So maybe we can piggyback on that, but I don't want to prescribe exactly how we do it. Just want to put that out there. And I don't know, Mr. Galanian, is there anything you want to say?
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. Mayor Agajanian, member of city council. My staff has been in contact with the Department of Insurance personnel and staff, and we are working closely with them in to disseminate this information as best and as wide as we can. As Councilmember Brotman mentioned already, starting yesterday, we posted this information and the flyer that they had submitted on all of our social media channels. We will coordinate with other charitable organizations and other community groups to further the, the publication of this news, and will also include it in our March City Connections newsletter that has, has a large number of followings, and we'll do our best, like I said, to spread the word. And, and staff from the Department of Insurance have also indicated their interest in making a presentation at the city council meeting in the near future so that the, the public who are listening or watching council can benefit from the information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And one other item, we've, I'm sure all have been hearing a lot of kind of quality of life complaints. I know that Councilmember Kasakian has brought up, you know, issues with graffiti and, and trash being left on the street, and we, we got a memo recently about efforts to address that issue. And we've gotten lots of emails, I know I've gotten many, about noise issues, you know, gas blowers, cars with modified exhaust. Most recently, I think maybe we were all approached by somebody in Spar Heights who is living near an automotive shop, and, and this is just one example, but, you know, they're, they're doing a lot of work out in their parking lot, which involves running loud compressors, washing cars in the street, all, you know, right up against a, a dense residential area, also with customers test driving vehicles up and down residential streets. And I know also recently, Councilmember Kasakian brought up an issue with PA noise and loading and unloading of cars on residential streets near the Brand Boulevard of Cars. So, you know, and I'm sure all of you have also been getting pinged on this. I, I don't know if it's that there's a deterioration in, in quality of life, or is it just an appearance of, of a worsening condition because, you know, so many of us are home during COVID. So I really can't speak to that. But what I was wondering is if there was a way that staff could kind of compile some of the data that we get either into the police department or into code enforcement, maybe categorize it so we can see what kinds of issues are coming up and, and maybe try to deal with them holistically. I, I understand that this one person who, in Spar Heights, and I went up to visit and looked at the situation there, but she says, you know, she, she got feedback from staff that they don't necessarily have all the right tools to be able to address some of these issues. So to the extent that there are problems and, and staff needs tools in terms of, you know, ordinances or what have you, it would be important for us to know exactly what's missing so that we can try to chip away at this problem. It is clearly, and I'm sure you all agree, something that people are feeling a lot more acutely these days. So I don't know if I need a second on that, or if, it, it's, it's basically just a request that staff look at, at, at the, I guess, the call logs and, and maybe try to organize that data in a way that we can have a discussion about the kinds of issues people are facing most acutely.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Yeah. Mayor Agajanian, member of city council, Councilmember Brotman. We obviously do have those data available to us in Neighborhood Services as well as the Police Department, and we can certainly compile them into categories so that it'll be better classified and clarified as to the nature of the complaints and plus the location of these complaints, if that's what you'd like to see in a report back to council.
And I, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm the new kid on the block, so I don't know have, if we've done this or if we've done this recently. I don't want to repeat an effort, but that's, you know, I haven't seen it. And, and also part of that is specifically what tools do staff feel that they're missing to be able to address some of these issues?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can just interject. I know that the departments, thank you, I know that departments have key performance indicators, if, and these are supposed to be the measures that were put in place or each department identifies as indicators of how, how they're doing, how their department is performing. At one point, maybe it's worthwhile to bring back, or I don't know when, we review those KPIs. I think it may be during budget study sessions, but to take what Councilmember Brotman is saying and incorporate that into a discussion as to how we're evaluating success within each department and each department's basic operations towards the quality of life, I think that's a worthwhile discussion for us to have clear measuring standards as to whether we're succeeding or not, or whether we're just spinning our wheels in place.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Agajanian, member of city council, Councilmember Kasakian is absolutely correct. We do have key performance indicators in place that we have been tracking for the last five to six years, so really good set of, set of data. Those will cover some of the questions that Councilmember Brotman had brought up, some data, but not the specifically complaints about, for example, a, a auto mechanic, mechanic shop, working, complaints that we received working adjacent to residential neighborhoods. But we also have that information. So we are in the process of updating those KPIs, and we'll be more than happy to share that with council in the near future.
Thank you. All right, is there any other comments? Okay.
Mayor, next item would be community event announcement, three-minute portion. I do have one caller on the line.
Okay, so as city clerk said here, so it's, we would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to community event announcement. We will be taking five callers. If we get five, then the speakers will be given three minutes to share their comments.
First caller is Kate Unger. Kate, you are live, go ahead.
Hi, yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of city council and staff.
Good evening.
I just wanted to call in very briefly to congratulate the new commission members and thank Councilmember Kasakian for appointing such well-qualified commissioners. I'm especially excited that the Sustainability Commission can get to work now, and I'm confident that Rondi Warner is going to offer valuable knowledge and insight. So really looking forward to seeing how that commission gets off the ground. And again, thank you so much, Councilmember Kasakian. Thank you all. I'll be talking to you again later this evening, I think. Bye.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mayor, that was the last caller and only caller.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Mayor, next, next item would be eight action items, eight A Finance Regarding Financial Status Update, December 31, 2021. One motion to note and file the financial status report for the period ending December 31, 2020. Two would be resolution of appropriation approving $76,966 in adjustments to the adopted fiscal year 2020-2021 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Agajanian, member of city council. As promised, this is one of the status update reports in the monthly update reports that we have. It was requested by council and we have brought forth in the past few months. Essentially, this one report is the mid-year budget status update. As was reported last month, again, it looks like the numbers that you will see during the presentation are tracking the projections. Again, this, that's good news, but we don't yet have the full picture of the COVID-19 impacts on, on our economy and the revenues. Staff is closely monitoring revenues and expenses so that we stay ahead of any major fluctuations so that we can act proactively. I don't want to steal Michelle Flynn's thunder any longer, so I'm going to turn it over to her for, our director of finance for the presentation on this item.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm gonna pull up the PowerPoint so we can go through that. Okay, so as Mr. Galanian mentioned, the report that we are going to be covering tonight is our mid-year report, so it will provide to you our update for six months of this fiscal year, and we will look at the general fund, the resources appropriations, as well as our projected fund balance for the year. We'll review Measure S. There are some small non-general fund budget adjustments that we will look at, as well as a quick update on our Section 115 pension rate stabilization trust. So diving into our revenues, as of December 31, we've received approximately $90.3 million or about 41% of our revised budget for the second quarter. This does not include Measure S revenues. As Mr. Galanian mentioned, we've been carefully analyzing the various revenue categories, looking at trends, and trying to figure out where we will end this fiscal year. Most of our large revenue categories, be it property tax, sales tax, utility users' tax, are all doing quite. tax, are all doing quite well. Sales tax is holding, so we are not proposing any adjustments in that category tonight. We are seeing some increases in the property tax category, as well as the utility users' tax category. And then other categories, we're looking at adjusting downward, the largest being charges for services. So on Slide 3, you'll see at the bottom there, the chart that we've summarized the adjustments that we're making for this quarter to our revenues. The largest, as I mentioned, is charges for services, and this is mainly due to COVID impacts on operations and what we can offer our citizens and the various fees that we would charge for different things. For example, contract classes that happen, a lot of the other recreational programs, rentals of our facilities, as well as filming, and camps and things like that. So this is a large adjustment downward in the revenue of about $3.8 million. The other large item here is in the occupancy and other tax category, and that is under the franchise tax commercial refuse agreement. We had anticipated that that agreement would be in place at some point during this fiscal year to generate some revenues for the city. So at this point, since that agreement has not yet been finalized, we're going to take that out of this year's projection. So with the upward adjustments of the couple of categories at the top there with property tax and utility users' tax, and then the other downward adjustments, we're looking at a net revenue reduction of about $3.5 million. Looking at Slide 4, Oops, sorry, Slide 4, all the major revenue categories, and you can see there, the sales tax category is remaining the same. Right here is our charges for services. This is showing that that large decrease of about $3.8 million and occupancy and other taxes. This incorporated, the first quarter incorporated the $4 million reduction in our transient occupancy tax. This quarter, we're reflecting that 1.2 million for the commercial franchise agreement. So at the end of the day, excuse me, our total resources is looking at around $229 million, just over 229 million. And we're hoping that this ends up being better than what we're thinking, but this is where we're at this point.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Mr. Kasakian. I'm sorry, Mr. Councilmember Brot.
Yeah, so on the revenue side, then if we go back to the adopted budget, and from then till now, we are lower by, I think, 5 million?
Correct, yes.
And that would be, I mean, percentage wise, it's pretty small, right? That's, where did we start? We started around 225? Okay, so that's, so we're down 2% maybe?
Right, a little over 2%.
Yeah, now, part of it, we had a bump from some COVID-related funds from, was it from the state or from the federal government?
That was the CARES Act monies that we received. Yes, and that's right in the revenues from other agencies that we booked there, and you'll see that large, it was about $2.5 million.
$2.5 million, so we would have been down 7.5, but we got that. But even the 7.5, I'm just thinking, 7.5 is still, I mean, still the COVID impact has been relatively small, like 3%. If you take that out.
Well, if you just look at what we've adjusted since adoption, the adopted budget did include some COVID impacts.
Yeah, that's true. That's true, of course, because we brought it down last year. Okay, okay. That's right. I missed that piece. All right.
Okay. Okay, so on the expenditure side, as of December 31, we are looking at about $116 million spent, or about 49.2% of our budget. Again, not inclusive of Measure S. The revised expenditure budget does include our budget carryovers, the first quarter reductions that the departments took of almost 1.7 million, as well as a small adjustment. So the revised budget remains at $237,958,000. We did the same thing on the expenditure side at this point as we did on the revenue side. We don't normally project a year-end savings on the expenditure side this early in the fiscal year, but given the situation, nothing is quite normal this year, so why not? We needed to provide council as much of, as clear of a picture as we could possibly provide you in order to make the decisions that you need to make and that the departments need to make for their operations. So we looked at historical trends across the revenue categories, assumptions that we know of that impacted us on our operations as a result of COVID, talking with some of the departments. And at this point, we have a conservative estimate of approximately $5.2 million savings across various general fund categories that we are anticipating to achieve. The largest categories there are contractual services of almost 1.4 million and the liability insurance expense of 1.7. So for contractual services, we generally do not spend 100% of the budget that is in contractual services in the general fund. And at some point, we do do some carryovers. So this number is a conservative estimate based on the trends that we see from year to year on contractual services. On the liability insurance, we did have a little bit higher rate than what we actually needed to fund in the liability fund to cover the costs. So we're seeing that savings here now in the general fund. So in total, with the other categories, that represents the projected savings of almost $5.2 million, or about 2.2% of our revised On Slide 7, this gives you the breakdown of all the major categories. For the general fund, the top part is our salaries and benefits, the large categories, then maintenance and operations, and then the others. And then you'll see towards the bottom down here, we've incorporated the projected year-end savings that we just talked about to bring our total expenditure budget down to $232,796,000. And I should say, all the departments are at or below the 50% mark at this point. We are trending high on overtime. Some of those costs do need to still get transferred out to the mutual aid fund, and because they are reimbursable, once we get the money for the mutual aid, we do move some of those costs out. But we typically do trend a little higher than budget on overtime, so that is not uncommon. This year especially is going to be a little different because of the constant staffing and the COVID impacts on operations and the police and fire department having to do what they need to do to keep operations going. Slide 8 gives you a summary of the general fund with the resources as we've talked about, with the revised resources of $229 million and our revised appropriations down below. So at this point, we are projecting a year-end use of fund balance of about $3 million, slightly better than what we had shown council last time, which was about $4.6 million, I believe. And looking at how that impacts our reserves, we are looking at about $78.2 million by the end of the fiscal year, which represents about 32.7% of our budget, well within the threshold of that council has adopted. Okay, moving on to Measure S, if there's no questions. The Measure S programs are, a lot of them are well underway. I know the departments and a lot of departments have been involved in putting these programs together and making them happen. So kudos to staff on all of that. I think we will start to see the actuals increasing in many of these categories during the next quarter's report that we provide you, or actually, yeah, probably when we come back at third quarter, we'll have a lot bigger actuals here to report. So we've not adjusted anything here. Our sales tax revenues for Measure S are trending, so we're keeping that estimate the same at this point. And you can see all the various categories that that council has approved for the year. Slide 12 gives you the projected ending balance of almost $2.6 million for Measure S, if all revenues and all appropriations happen for the year. The non-general fund budget adjustments that are being requested are all outside the general fund. They are in grant funds for library, as well as one grant fund for parks, which is the last item there, and then the library mitigation fee fund. And these are mainly to just provide some expenditures, an appropriation for some expenditures that each of the departments need to utilize that funding with. So it's $76,966,000 in adjustments that's being requested. And lastly, a quick update on our Section 115 Pension Rate Stabilization Fund. Just to remind council, we had an initial deposit of $26.5 million back in the August to September timeframe. We did that in three separate deposits, and it was invested in a moderate conservative allocation. And during, right when COVID happened, we changed that allocation. I'm sorry, it is currently in a moderate conservative allocation. We changed it from the moderate allocation that we started with back in March of 2020. We did an additional deposit last June of $5.5 million that council had approved, and that is in a conservative allocation. So as of December 31 of 2020, we have an ending balance of $38.4 million and the net average annual return of 6.2% since inception. And that concludes my presentation this evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Mr. Kasakian.
Thank you. Just a quick question. First of all, I think it was a great idea to put all that purse stabilization money in GameStop stock, so kudos to you guys for doing that. That's a joke.
I thought it was in Bitcoin.
Bitcoin or GameStop. Now, I think the conservative investment is, I think, the smarter thing to do in all seriousness, because despite the roller coaster or the this continuing upward trend in the stock market, I think that, you know, what goes up must come down eventually. So as long as we're keeping any funds of the public in these conservative investments, I think that is a smarter move to make. But in terms of the TOT tax, I wanted to ask about that. So you did mention that there's been a shortfall of that revenue for obvious reasons. Now, with the numbers that we see dropping, is there any way to extrapolate what sort of an impact that translates into for the hotel industry or the sector here in Glendale? Can we figure out what that means in terms of vacancies? Have we, are we doing, have we done, will we do outreach to the hotels to see if any of them are teetering on going out of business and things that we can anticipate in that regard?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kasakian, we have not done, Finance has not done any specific outreach to the hotels to find out how they are actually doing. I can tell you that the TOT we are collecting represents probably in the neighborhood and has, like, since the summer, anywhere from about 30% to 40% occupancy, or basically what they would normally provide. So it is, it is a lot lower, and it's not unique. Across the state of California, and actually the nation, the hospitality industry has been very hard hit with COVID, and is going to be, from what I've heard multiple times in different conferences, as well as listening to different economists talk about what's going on, probably one of, probably the last sector to come back, because it will take the longest to come back. So as far as the outreach to the hotels, we've not specifically done that. I don't know if that's something our staff can do, maybe in coordination with CDD, but we can look at doing that if council desires.
I think it's CDD should, our Economic Development Department should definitely do the outreach. Any sector of our economy that's taking a 60% hit deserves to receive some attention and some contact from the folks here at the city to let them know that we're here and help provide them any guidance they may need to access resources, whether it's through funds available, through the federal programs, state programs, whatever may be there.
Thank you. Is there any other question?
I believe Mr. Lanza Faim wants to speak, but he's on mute.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kasakian, economic development has touched base, not with every hotel. For the most part, they're the large chains, and so they are well aware of all of the resources. But we have reached out to all of them to tell them about what is available. We have come up or heard the same as Michelle Flynn has said, in some cases, they're even lower than that, 20%, and they won't come back till business travel comes. One of the things that we're going to be asking you next week is, through our business recovery, is to allow us to spend some money to put together a real good survey that would help us learn what business needs the most coming out. As I've said to you before, there's not enough money in the Treasury to throw at business and make it better. There's going to need to be policy and program changes. So certainly hospitality has got to be one of the things that we focus on. And it may be a shift from the business traveler to the tourist traveler. That won't happen, though, until that that sector comes around as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanza Faim. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Councilmember Najarian.
Let me ask Michelle, are we expecting any significant funding from the new COVID relief bill that's working its way through Congress?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Najarian. Yes, we have heard that that bill does have funding direct to cities as well as counties, and that that revenue could be utilized for backfill of lost revenue for cities, which would mean we don't have to offset any of our expenditures. It would be, you know, whatever adjustments we've had in our revenues as far as decreases in our TOT, decreases in our charges for services, et cetera. So yes, the league has put out some numbers for the cities in California, and Glendale is on the list to receive a decent amount. I believe it's in the 40 million range, somewhere around there. That's what's in the bill right now, if that, if that formula that they've utilized stays.
Well, that's significant, Michelle. I mean, we're looking at a 5 million mid-year shortfall, 40 million is significant.
Yes.
So keep us posted, and let's think about, do we have to spend that? Can we put that into different funds, or how? Let us know. It's not all passed yet, so please let us know if something comes through that we need to make a policy decision.
Yes, Councilmember Najarian, we are looking at that very closely. I've heard it. I know John Tectullian in the CM's office is following it as well. And we don't know the parameters yet that they will put on that, on that amount, if we do get it, and what we may have to utilize it for, if anything specific. My understanding is it is less restrictive than any other funding that we've received to date. So we will, we'll know more as it moves through the Congress.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Brot, Mr. Councilmember Brot.
Very quickly, I just wanted to say thank you to Michelle and staff for this great report and for just keeping on top of this, keeping us up to date, and keeping the ship righted. So, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Divine?
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to, I also wanted to thank Michelle for a clear, concise, easy to understand report. I really appreciate that. And I also wanted to make a comment about the TOT. And serving on the airport authority, we've been told that tourism is going to come back before business travel comes back. So that bodes, I don't know if that bodes well for the hotel business or not, but keeping that in mind. So with that, I will, if there aren't any more comments, I will move Item 8A 1 and 2.
Okay, once, all right. Ms. Flynn, thank you for the report. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you, what's next on the agenda, please?
Next item would be 8B, which we came, Community Development Regarding Status of the Slow Street Program and Future Direction of the Program. One motion directing staff on future action of the Slow Streets Program, including whether to terminate the program, leave the program in place as is without future sign replacement or repair, or identify solutions and criteria for a permanent program.
Thank you. Mr. Golani.
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, Member City Council, you saw a preview of this item as part of this afternoon's study session. This was one of the items that was included in Mr. Calvert's presentation. This goes back to a request that came through councilmember Brotman last year, a couple of months into the start of the pandemic, where people were taken advantage of more walking, and in order to make sure that they comply with the social distancing protocols, which was suggested by, like I mentioned, councilmember Brotman, and staff has implemented that program, but now they need direction as to what the future holds as far as expanding the program, or terminating it, or other options that we may have. I'm going to turn it over to Bradley Calvert, our Assistant Director of Community Development, for a report.
Mr. Calvert.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, councilmembers. So I'd like to share a presentation to go over the history of the project and then some alternatives moving forward. So what we want to do is offer an overview of the program and its implementation, how that program has performed over the past several months, and then alternatives for what we could do with the program going forward, and that includes an option for a permanent Slow Streets program. As we looked around other cities around the country, what we saw is that many of these programs were received very well, much like many of our residents, but they did run into challenges, and they came up with alternatives to be able to move that forward as a permanent program. So as mentioned by Mr. Golani, and this was a council-directed program, really the intent here was to try to remind motorists to slow down, as there were many people that were using the right of way for, as pedestrians, as cyclists, alternative modes of transportation during the state and home orders. This really started from, you know, trying to help residents keep safe distance, especially in neighborhoods where sidewalks may have been too narrow, or maybe didn't exist, but then overall, just reminding motorists that the right of way does belong to all modes of transportation. So this really responded to that increased pedestrian and cyclist activity. One thing I would like to make a note of is that none of these represented street closures. We did not close streets, we did not restrict traffic. The goal here really was to remind motorists to slow down, to be more aware and more cognizant of other modes of transportation in the immediate area. This is just a quick example of one of the installations. This ended up serving as one of the better examples, as you can see, this was a street that did not have sidewalks. You see the users out there at the time. The goal here was to make sure that the signs were installed essentially at the stop line of the intersections. We found that this would be the most effective means, this is what we saw from other cities as well, to make sure that motorists were slowing down, especially as they were making turns, as they were moving through intersections, and offering this as a reminder. These signs typically on the nominated street would be placed on the two opposing ends. Sometimes they would also be put in the block, depending on the length of the street, or if there was also another intersection somewhere in between kind of the two terminating ends of that nominated street. This was an application-driven process. On the right, you can see is, is an example of the application. We did not require petition signatures, though we did leave an option for that. Some applicants did submit applications with, with petition signatures to demonstrate community support for it. The project, or the website was launched, residents could download this PDF, fill this out, including their name, their address, and their contact information, so that we had a point of contact within the community, and then they would nominate the street. And as you can see towards the bottom there, essentially be between two endpoints and intersections as well. These applications were reviewed by CDD and Public Works. Essentially, the criteria here was, is that no major arterials would be included. Central Avenue in downtown, Glen Oaks, high-traffic streets, high-volume streets were not included as part of this. It also allowed us an opportunity to assess these existing street composition, so that we understood the best placement. Whilst center of the street at the stop line was preferred, it was not always possible. In some cases, we did have to put that curbside because the street was just too narrow for a center-street installation. In total, there were 300 signs that were installed across the city. This is essentially what we had budgeted for, using the TDA funds that were allocated, a total of 191 street segments, and that really is defining the length of the street, the length of the block that that was included on. Some segments needed four, five, six signs, others only needed two. So that was really dependent on how many intersections were prevalent in the street segment that was nominated, and the overall street composition as well. We saw 250 of these signs deployed in North Glendale, north of the 134, and another 50 on the south side, south of the 134. This would be a point we'll bring up a little bit later on, but if this is a program that we do want to move forward as something permanent, this is something that we will need to address, making sure that the residents of South Glendale are aware of this program, know of this program, and know of the process in order to increase the equity in the distribution of these signs across the city. A total of 96 applications were received, 85 of them were approved, the 11 or so that were not approved, that was based on if they had nominated an arterial street, or if by chance several applications were submitted for the same segment. So we had a few duplicates in there that were not completed. Location was determined by the street, so again, center was preferred, a curbside was something that was done in the case where streets were too narrow. So what I'd like to do here is turn this over to Public Works to give kind of an overview of implementation. While the program was very well received by the residents of Glendale, we did run into issues in terms of signs being demolished, vandalized, damaged in some means. So I have to turn this over to Edward Hitty, so he can offer an overview of that implementation process.
Thank you, thank you, Bradley. You're in, Mayor Agajanian, and city councilmembers. Just to, to mention that the staff really received, as earlier mentioned, almost 95 applications, or 96 applications, and those were really based on, the, the, the placement of those signs was based on a street geometry configuration and classification. Looking at this program as a traffic calming measure, the staff used the Glendale Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program in order to limit this, this project where it's really feasible and applicable, to mainly to community and neighborhood collector, as well as local street. And the staff spent, as you see here, over 200 of in-house staff time to install, repair, maintain the 300 signs. Some of those signs due to the site locations, which really the, the, the goal was to put in the middle of the street, in the center, at the, at the crosswalks, and that was all those signs being implemented and placed on those, as those locations. With time after the second, third, whether damaged by vehicles, or sometimes vandalized, or sometimes, some people liking moving to another street that were not even on the applications, we lost almost 30% of those signs. And, next sign, please. The staff, we use the, our Public Works Traffic Maintenance Staff to, we ordered the materials, some of the signs were ordered by CDD, the frame itself and the, and the amber light were ordered by Public Works, and all been collected, all been assembled, and delivered and installed at the 191 segments. And those were, again, the, the, mainly at the intersection. If the segment consists of only one start and one end, one segment, that would require at least, you know, two signs. Sometimes we get the application for a stretch of three, four blocks, so we did that beginning at the end, midway, and at every intersection also, to bring the driver's attention about slowing down, because those are really traffic calming measures, as mentioned earlier. And some location, after the third attempt, and a lot of damage, we start losing those signs, we start placing them at the parkway area, and still facing the traffic, but to keep it out of the way, especially on a narrow street where some of those seats are only 22 to 24 feet wide. Next slide, please. The staff also looked into other alternatives, what neighboring cities or agencies are using, and they kind of went through the same challenge in term of how to maintain them, how to keep them, is this program temporary, or this is going to be a permanent program, looking for long-term installation and maintenance, or just it's, it's that window during this COVID-19. So the city, the county of LA, they use the existing signs, and where really, where you see it, no parking, and only regulatory sign like stop sign, mainly on the parking limitations sign or street name sign, they were, they installed those at very minimal cost. Their costs, as you see, close to 30, $30 per unit. Has advantage, disadvantage, it really definitely, it's out of the traffic in term of not being hit, and not being damaged, and not being stolen, at the same time, may not have the visibility that really we intend. If a van or truck parked in that location, it will be blocked. Some of those signs even need to be raised higher if it's in a sidewalk area, because of the limitation has to be cleared from the, from the bottom of the sidewalk to the pedestrian, close to 80, 84 inches high. Next slide, please. We also look at the long-term or permanent installation, and that will require some either bolting or epoxy, those, those equipment room is available in the market, and that, that will cost between 100 to $150 per unit installed. It's definitely very high visibility. It does, has a breakaway, you can only replace the post and the sign definitely will be damaged, the base is, is still really on the pavement. And some instant, the base may be damaged or being hit hard or failing, and that would require really removal of the pavement, it become almost like a pothole, where we have to repair it, we have to replace it. And the, the, however, the advantage of it, it does resist some wind, as you see previous slides, we were temporary, we put those A-frames with the sandbag to really make it sturdy, make it, you know, resistant to some wind, as well as a, a traffic, traffic wind sometime from the vehicles. And this particular one has that flexibility to sustain and last longer. And I conclude my year presentation for this segment of this report. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to respond before I turn it over to Calvert. Mr. Calvert, I'm sorry.
What, to put another couple of alternatives out there as part of the consideration, this is also very similar to what Edward had just presented, another option in Miami Beach, they had actually moved theirs into a permanent program as well, a very similar setup, a blade sign, this, in this case, they actually bolted the signs to the street. Either way, we would pursue through a bid process to identify the best alternative, but between that option and this one, it shows that there is a, a price range here that we will fall within, in terms of putting these kind of signs in the roadway. Basically, everything else here is the same, though, it's a higher visibility because it's in the streets, the sign can be replaced, if the, if the base is not damaged, that can remain. And in this case, they, they had to drill holes into the street to put this in on a permanent basis. Another option that Miami Beach looked at was essentially a planting bag with a sign. This would be used on much wider streets, they saw this as an opportunity for a little bit of beautification as well, but it also does come at a much higher unit price. The low end was 280, in some cases, it went all the way up to 350 to $380. The pros here, very high, high visibility, would not create any impact to the street as there's nothing to affix permanently, permanently to the street. The challenge here is that it is a much higher cost, there is going to be more materials needed, and there's going to be maintenance. If this does get hit, we're going to have to clean up the mess that's created from the soil, from the vegetation, plants are going to need to be watered, things of that nature, but it just represented another one of those alternatives on that spectrum between a lower-cost alternative of placing the sign on a signpost, or something of this nature.
A quick question, if I might?
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Brotman.
Bradley, so that, that, if you could go back, so that planter, what are you calling that thing, anyway, planter bag, planting bag, that, that would go in the middle of the street?
Correct, so this, this example here, they, they just set it up as a example situation on, on a sidewalk, it would be used on wider streets, not standard Wizz streets, but opportunities where maybe the street is a little bit wider, and they have the luxury to be able to occupy a little bit more space between the bag itself and the planting.
And, and has Miami Beach had experience with this? Because, I mean, here in Glendale, that thing's going to get hit, and it's seen, it seems like it's trouble, even though it looks really nice.
No, I think that's definitely one of the disadvantages. They've just recently rolled into their permanent program, so they don't have feedback on the, on the performance of these specific, or this specific alternative, but it does represent that one. Again, there's, there's an opportunity to create a larger mess that we're going to have to clean, there's more maintenance that could go along with it as well.
Yeah.
And also, it's very expensive.
Yes, and much more expensive as well. We did present these alternatives to the TPC during their mobility study session that we, we held the other week. Their preference was for a center-street installed sign, similar to what you see there on the right, those examples. They did have a preference against the pole-mounted or vegetated, the vegetated bag installations. Some of their, their feedback on the bag installations were similar, that's going to require more maintenance, it's more costly. The pole-mounted was seen as not as visible. The important thing to note here, especially if we're, we're choosing alternatives, and council doesn't want to move forward with a permanent program, these are all not mutually exclusive, they can be mixed and matched based on a different, different criteria, if we understand that a street is too narrow, for one of the examples you see on the right, that may be an opportunity to put something on the signpost. Part of this program, if it were to move forward in a permanent phase, would need to have new criteria updated. TPC did believe that there should not be a petition process to this, this is something staff also agrees with. During COVID, we saw that as a disadvantage, because we were encouraging people to engage with one another. More importantly, it's going to represent a disadvantage for South Glendale. It's much easier if you live in a single-family street, and you only have 10 neighbors that you need to get feedback from, versus a multifamily street where maybe there's several hundred units, and getting a certain criteria or certain number of petitions is going to be much more challenging for South Glendale. We do believe if we're going to move this forward, that we need to make sure that it is equitable from a geographic distribution. TPC also expressed a priority for streets with no sidewalks, those that do not have sidewalks should be given first consideration for these installations, should be given a priority consideration. That is something else that staff also agrees with, and something that could be worked into a more refined criteria. So essentially, what we have are three alternatives. We could terminate this program as it is today, remove all signs, and, and cease to operate the Slow Streets program. We currently are not taking new applications on the website as is, but if council wished, we could terminate this program and then remove the signs from the streets. The second alternative would be to leave these signs in place where they are still standing, as you heard from, from Mr. Hitty, about 30% of these have been demolished and will not be replaced as we've exhausted current funding. We would not maintain them, but we would go and clean them up if they became damaged or no longer were serviceable. The third would be to create a permanent program based on these alternatives that you've seen from, from other cities, whether that's pole-mounted, street-mounted, the vegetated bag example, or a combination of these based on a, a refined criteria. So the next steps, and I'd like to outline this portion before asking for council's feedback and direction in terms of what that future phase of this program will look like, is that if we did opt to do a permanent program, we would ask council to select their preference of the signage types that were presented to you today as part of the examples. We would use TDA and Measure M funding, similar to how we did before. We would request additional funding so that this program could also cover some of the first year's maintenance and installation and staff time that it would take. And then, community development and public works would work to create a new criteria for permanent installations. That would include prioritizing streets with insufficient pedestrian infrastructure, no petition as part of that, as well as improved outreach to South Glendale community. So that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, how much did we spend? Okay, how much did we spend thus far? How much we, did we spend on this project that you were explaining to us?
Total, we spent thirty thousand dollars for the signs and barricades for about three hundred installations.
How about, how many hours to do all that?
A total of two hundred and four hours were used to install.
Oh, so the two hundred and four hours which you were showing before is the total?
Correct, that's total.
Nice, all right, thank you. Is there any question from Mr. Calvert? So?
Well, I have some comments, not.
Comments, okay, Mr. Councilmember Bratman.
Yeah, so I, I actually, you know, I asked for this and I, and I initially at the beginning of COVID and I, and I like it, I think it's been popular. I've heard a couple complaints, but mostly I've heard people, you know, say how much they enjoy it. And it's, it's, you know, I think it's, it's now that I look back on it, I think it's more like, its effectiveness is more psychological than, than actual. I mean, I think that it's like a placebo, you know, people, it works because people think it's going to work. And I think what it did is, it made people feel safer coming out and walking in the street, and, and I've seen in lots of locations just more people with, you know, babies and kids on, you know, bikes and families walking, couples holding hands. And, and I think as people kind of are walking more in the street, that in, in and of itself makes cars a little more cautious, slows down traffic, which then creates a virtuous cycle and you get more people feeling safe walking. So I, I kind of think it works in that way. But like, like, you know, like any placebo, after a while, it stops working. Maybe that's not absolutely true, I'm not a, I'm not a, I'm not a doctor, but that's my assumption. And, and, and definitely the signs are looking tired, even the ones that are still up there are, you know, a lot of the lights aren't working and the sand is leaking out of the bags and they're, 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 they're looking pretty bad. So I think, I wouldn't want to see it go away, but I wouldn't want to just keep what we have in place. I think it's, it's starting to, to, to be a negative. So I would, I would definitely be in favor of making it a permanent program with the focus on those paddles in the middle of the street. I think the signs along the side, side of the street are kind of useless. I would not really recommend spending money on that. I would not really recommend that planter bag, even though it looks pretty cool. I just think that'll, that'll be, that'll be a mess in Glendale. But yeah, the paddle signs and, and I do like the idea, idea of, of not having a petition process and really making sure that we proactively go out into South Glendale, into the more walkable neighborhoods and, and, and put them in there because people, you know, they're just harder to, it's harder to reach and those are not often the communities that come out and ask for things. So we should be proactive in getting it out there. There's a little bit of a contradiction between places with no sidewalks in South Glendale because most of the places with no sidewalks are in, probably in North Glendale. Some exceptions, Adams Hill, but I think by and large, that's true. So we would have to balance that, but, but I do agree with TPC's recommendations on that. You know, my only hesitation, if, if any, is just that, you know, the money that we spend on this, what I worry is that it's taking away money that we would spend on real traffic calming. You know, things like speed humps and, and chokers and all the other things that, you know, you've talked about in, in the pedestrian plan. And I, I, I am a bit hesitant because I think this is more of like a psychological thing than some of those other treatments. But nonetheless, I still think it does have value. And if, if we, if we do have the funds, I don't know if it's something that Measure S might be able to support to some extent. I, I, I kind of hate losing that, that, those Measure M funds for this, but I, but I do think it, it, it has, it has value. And I think just pulling it out would be a real mistake. And it, I think the last thing I'll say is it does, it does tell us how much people care about and, and want to be out, want to be outside, you know, living, you know, living outside their front doors, you know, living, you know, on the street and having those experiences. Because I think people really valued that during COVID. And, and I'd like to preserve that, I'd like to enhance that in any way we can.
Okay, one second. I want to ask, did we get any complaint that this sign damaged the vehicle? Because I have seen some of these signs, a car comes and somehow pushes to the other side of the street and then another car came and the sign hit the, the ongoing car. Did we receive, maybe the police chief or anybody else can answer? Do we have any complaint or damage to a vehicle that they filed or called? Anybody is aware of problem?
So on the signs, we actually placed contact information to ask for input on the performance of the, the program. We did not receive any complaints to that email box regarding damage to any automobiles. Police may be able to offer some insight on that, but we had not received any complaints about damage.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Devine?
Thank you, thank you. You know, I, I think we need to work at calming our streets and making them safer for pedestrians and cyclists and anyone else. And, and I think if our residents feel that this is working, which I'm understanding that they do from the emails that I receive and from what I hear from staff, our residents really are supportive of this program. I even got an email and from a gentleman who found a sign that was damaged and he emailed me and wanted to know how he could either get it back to the city or have someone pick it up. And it turned out that he fixed it himself and then put it back on the street. So I mean, people are really, I think, at this point vested in the program. And I agree there, that the signs look terrible. I've seen people take them and put them on the side of the, the street and et cetera. So I, I am for creating a permanent program. I am also in favor of all of the TPC feedback that you received. I think that's, I, I agree with everything, no petition necessary. I would leave it up to staff to figure out where they go and, and make sure that it is equitable, that no sidewalk be a preference. Also, I think because the signs are permanent or semi-permanent, that there should be some sort of language in the program or in the, I don't know if it's going to be in ordinance or what we're going to have here, but there should be something in there about the city and litigation and that if someone hits one of these signs and it doesn't spring back or spring or move or causes damage, that the city is not responsible. And that goes to, to what the mayor was commenting on, that, you know, cars are hitting these and so far, we haven't had any, any incidents where they're coming to us, to the city and saying, you know, I'm going to sue you because I damaged my car. And, but I think if we do this permanent installation, that we should definitely have some language in there about the city is not responsible. Drive safely, drive carefully, and, you know, there's a reason for those signs. And, and so of course, I'm against the planters, those would have dirt and trees all over the place, so I'm definitely against that. So that's where I stand, and you wanted to know which sign we, we preferred, Bradley? Did I understand that correctly from the?
No, the, the comments you provided answered the question about the, the signs in the center of the street. One thing I did forget to mention earlier, my apologies, is that we would redesign this sign as well. One thing, to create more visibility for it, but also to recognize that it's going to change the scale and configuration of what's out there today.
Okay, great, thank you, thanks. That concludes my comments, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to ask Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Garcia. So what happens in a case that one of these signs hits a car? Let's say a truck goes by, then one of the signs flies and hits another car. So where do we stand with it? Or damage hits a kid or whoever was crossing the street?
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, generally as a, as an approved program and design of, you know, the city council, city engineer input, we would have immunities. Now, that doesn't mean in every case we're going to not have any potential exposure, but there, there are, there are immunities that allow, that provide us protection in this, this scenario.
But we can be liable also in certain cases?
Depending on the circumstances, yes. For example, if a sign fell down or was knocked down and we got notice of it and we didn't do anything, yeah, that'd be, that'd be an extreme situation, obviously, but in the normal circumstance, we, we would have some immunities from liability.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments or comment? Mr. Najarian? Mr. Katsaki?
Sure, Councilmember Najarian, did you want to go first?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, well, first of all, I do think that the program has worked where it has worked. Obviously, from your report and what we've heard, it's been effective in some areas, some areas not so effective. In fact, some areas haven't gotten it, I guess, so they've taken these signs and put them wherever they've placed them. I don't know if I'm entirely sold on all the options yet because I do tend to agree that this feels a little bit like a Band-Aid on a bullet wound on a greater problem. We're hoping that these A-frame type signs, no matter how sturdy the material is comparative to just having a wood frame sign is just not enough to, to address or deter the, the concerns about driving fast on some of our residential streets and also providing adequate safety for those individuals who want to use the streets for walking, recreation, bicycling. So my one question is, you mentioned that we haven't been adding any more. How many more requests have we received since we stopped providing these signs? That's for me to gauge the popularity, I guess, of it.
I believe we've received upwards of fifty since we've actually stopped taking applications. And mind you, we had ninety-six for the initial deployment of the program. There's also the additional request to replace the ones that either have been damaged or removed or relocated as well.
But that's independent of the fifty new, those are fifty unique new requests for streets.
Correct.
So that's a good thing. It's a good problem to have, I suppose, or it points to a problem that we have, that we should be addressing. And in addition to that, we have to now, of the ones that were damaged, how many did you say have been replaced?
In the first round, we were able to replace some that have been damaged. I, I'm not sure of the number on that. At a certain point, we were no longer able to replace them and we were also completing the new applications that we had received.
And once it is installed, you know, the issue I have with any word, you know, when we say in government, you know, the permanence, the, the P-word, like once it, you know, we have this program or once something is installed in the ground, how would a neighborhood remove it conceivably if they wanted to have it removed? Maybe they don't like the look of it, maybe too many people are crashing into it, what would be that process like?
Edward, would you like to answer that?
Sure, really, if I may address that. The, the permanent installation, if you want to call it permanent, you know, with that, with the paddle or the stick, it's really epoxy, it's very, very strong material. Even if we decided to remove them down the road, not damaged by any vehicle, we have to damage the pavement by itself in order to remove it. So it's very sturdy, it's not easy to be stolen or removed. And it may take some beat up if, in term of, you know, driving over it or damage the sign. But most likely with two or three incident, we may need to replace that. It depends on the material and manufacturer.
So with those signs, the paddles that I see proposed, one of the issues I have, I do think that the light, the flashing light is a key warning sign for individuals. If we just put a paddle there, it's, I can see individuals hitting it at, at night in the dark, you know, during a turn. To me, it does, does not seem adequate and effective, although it is permanent, more permanent than anything else. I understand what my colleagues are saying about having planters there. I think planters provide a whole nother set of issues. Because if we're worried about people hitting plants and having dirt and trees everywhere, you know, what makes us think that they won't hit the paddles, right? I mean, it's, it's an indication of either the quality of drivers that we have in the city. Although I do think sometimes the trees or the vegetation may blend in with the background and someone may not pay closer attention. I don't want to take what happened in the Locker Center area, in the north part of the city, with the street, with the city welcoming signage and replicate it on, on residential streets all over Glendale. That would not be my intention. I would not want to see a sign being hit three, four, or five times until we finally wiseen up that the paddles were not the, the best choice. So I don't know where I stand on this. I mean, I do think that the program is necessary, obviously, you're getting fifty more requests. I don't know if these are the ideal solutions to it. And, and let me just say that, you know, in terms of traffic calming and slowing things down, I've been asking and I've been trying to advocate for the painting solutions where we paint an optical illusion, it may seem whimsical, they have them in different countries where it creates this illusion that a person may be driving over a bump or a block and it causes the person to slow down. I, I just think we need to put our, our thinking hats on and think about this a little bit more carefully. I don't want to commit to anything per, permanent quite yet. Let's see also how things move forward once we're out of this stay-at-home pandemic period. My concern is, and lastly, I do want to say that I do have some issue with taking out, I do understand the equitable application of it, but I do think that we can come up with a way to provide a process for those denser neighborhoods versus the single-family neighborhoods that may want this. I don't want to eliminate completely the democratic process of neighbors being able to request this on whether, it doesn't necessarily have to be a majority basis, but, but at least have some threshold of people wanting it in a certain area before we go ahead and impose it on any neighborhood. So those are my initial thoughts and, you know, I appreciate the feedback and I do think that it's important for us to make our streets safer. I do think that the program initially has had some benefit, but I don't know. I, I just think that we ought to analyze that. If those, in those areas where we've had repeated accidents or repeated issues with those signs, let's try to figure out what to do in those areas versus whatever else.
Thank you.
Your suggestion, thanks.
Mr. Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. I think, you know, I think this whole concept has been well-received from the public, by most of the public. I've, there's a few down in the woodlands and people appear to take walks more freely and ride bikes, little tots, back and forth on the roadway. From what I'm, from the pictures I've seen and the, the few specimens I've seen, I don't think these, the ones that are damaged, I don't think they're damaged by accident. I mean, it looks like there's some aggressive drive, it sounds like they've nicked it and it's spun around a little bit. These things are completely, you know, run over perhaps in a moment of road rage or rebellion against the city or, you know, or traffic controls in, in general. So I think the ones on the posts are also going to be targets for, for drivers to just roll over. I'm thinking of, of something a little more, a little more permanent. I don't know if you guys can see that. This is a eight-foot wide, and I just popped this up on the internet. This is just an, it's an eight-foot wide plastic K-rail type device. You can fill it with water or sand. It's only a hundred and eighty dollars, which is just a little less than, than double what our signs are. If you're doing three hundred for thirty thousand, that's about a hundred bucks a pop. I don't think anyone's gonna, oops, I'm low on battery. I don't think anyone is gonna intentionally try and run this over because I think they're going to suffer some consequences to their vehicle. I mean, this is just an example of something that's a little more permanent, it's a little more substantial. I think it gives a little more sense of protection to both the people driving on the street, they're realizing they've got to watch out and perhaps those walking on the street. These could be fitted with the reflective lights and the, the little flashers. They could even be decorated by the community if that. They could even be decorated by the community if that wouldn't make them too invisible, you know, in some manner. So I like the idea. I'd like to see a few more options for for devices that would that would work. This is eight-foot wide. This particular model, ninety-six inches, is eight feet wide. I'm sure they can come in, you know, four-foot segments, so they wouldn't be an invitation to run over because they couldn't do that. And a little more girth in the roadway to let people know and be a little more permanent. We wouldn't have to keep going back replacing them. So I'd like to see, I like the, I like the project, the program. I'd like to see a little more options on the devices that that we could place to let drivers know that this is a safe street or a slow street.
Thank you. I just, okay, let's go to the call.
One, one more thing before we go to the call, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Katsaki.
Whatever we have should be, whatever we end up placing or replacing whatever we have now with, I would like for it to be highly reflective at night, some somehow visible, particularly at nighttime. You know, there's all these safety vests and and clothing that joggers wear and others to keep their safety. Whatever it is should be visible to drivers at night on those streets, especially with some of those streets that can be darker. You want it to be visible by, you know, have it just pop out when the car with headlights is coming down the street and sees it.
Thank you. Let's go to the callers.
Ms. Valentine, you're live. Ms. Valentine, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Valentine, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. I I turned on channel six because I wanted to find out if you have a plan to prevent what happened to Tiger Woods, what Glendale is going to do after that incident. But I I happened to see this blue Miami sign. That's very scary. They they will take me straight into the pond. Now, the only sign that makes sense on Chevy Chase in California is the triangle that is holding a stop sign in the middle because there was a fatality there. Now, the people that are working on this this program, they need to know Glendale streets, not by computer. Number two, they need to, this your report has no name, no addresses given. I didn't, I had to walk away. I can't take those kind of reports that they spend hours to put together. We need, we need a list of the addresses that they're working on. Now, we need, in in Chevy Chase, we need paint, paint, and paint, the yellow and the white, two kinds of paints. That's all we need to make that street safe. Now, I have a question. How many different departments are working with this program? Do you have a list of requests right now? How many years have they been in the works? How old are those requests, the requests that haven't been done? That's all. Thank you. I will talk to you later.
Thank you.
You got me, Tiger Woods got me going. Bye.
Bye. Next caller, please.
Herbert Mulano, you're live, Herbert.
Hi, thank you very much. Mayor Gajian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Mulano. I've, I guess it saddens me to to see the conditions with regard to pedestrian collisions and and the general level of unsafe driving that is taking place in Glendale. I've seen this, the the signage on several of the streets in my neighborhood as a welcome way of reminding people to to drive safely. But I, since I've been in Glendale for over thirty-three years, I remember in the eighties, when people came into Glendale, they knew that they had to change their driving habits and become significantly more aware. The enforcement in the nineteen eighties was pretty rigid, but at the same time, we felt a lot safer than we feel today. There is a discourtesy that borders on recklessness, the impatience, people honking at you before because you have to do a full stop or a full stop sign when somebody's coming behind you. The the number of incidences that I personally experienced in the central part of Glendale is discomforting. And I walk a lot and I also find distracted driving. I think that the problems are so many and and getting significantly worse that it really merits for the city to take up the issue of all of these traffic problems and safety problems and look at it in a different way and analyze it properly. I followed the pedestrian collisions that appears on the police report, on the statistics. It roughly averages about a hundred and ten pedestrian collisions per year, except for one year that it was unusually low about three, four years ago. It's an aberration. I don't think statistically valid, but nonetheless, that problem has not been resolved. And I think the city needs to put some real good energy into figuring out the, not just the different causes for pedestrian collisions, but also the discourtesy that is taking place and the unsafe feeling that we're getting now driving through the streets of Glendale. And I hope the city council approaches this in a different, more encompassing way. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. I just about these signs. I was driving on Glen Oaks from west to east, where Glen Oaks comes to a point that from four lane, it turns to be two lane on East Glen Oaks. So there was a big profile car was going, truck, these days, these trucks are so big anyway. And then there is a smaller car behind it, and that was the third one. That big profile truck, there was one of these signs in the middle of that tiny side of it from four lane to two lane. The big one passed, the second one, which was behind, in front of me, I guess realized all of a sudden this sign is in front of them and they moved quickly to the right and he was about to hit the car which was parked on the right side. So that's why I'm worried one day we will cause problem for somebody because they follow each other, they go, you know, like, that area is like thirty-five or the speed, I guess, is thirty-five, the four-lane side of it. So I would rather, although it has been said here that if you put the slow sign on the side of the street rather than on the middle of the street, it's not as effective as it's in the middle of the street. So obviously, you see in front of you in the middle of the street, but I'm worried one of these days, this sign will fly, whether somebody will hit and another person, then have some problems or injuries or even, I don't know, maybe death because things flies, it's very dangerous. So personally, I don't have that much idea about these things, but I would rather see the sign which is at the side and not to see somebody would be damaged or hurt at a later time. That's my observation, that what I saw, that this was like a month and a half ago. That's why somehow that signs in the middle of those tiny streets bothers me a lot. That's me. Okay, is there any, so what we do now? What's, so is, did we decide, decide?
We need a motion on one of the alternatives along with.
Okay.
Um, I, can I make a comment?
Yes, please. Ms. Divine.
Well, I'm I'm thinking that we have several of us that that think that as a sign, some sort of semi-permanent or permanent signage would be, you know, we'd be supportive of, what if we somehow, Mr. Calvert, do a pilot program with like, one of the signs that we're talking about, the the ones that spring back and and see how that goes, like for, I don't know, six months? Put those, you know, come up with a number to put around the city and see how it works out and then we kind of know. Or or one that's semi-permanent, other than what we have now. And I mean, the the ones we're talking about, the permanent signs are thinner, they're narrower, so maybe will not be as as easily hit as those, the ones we're using right now. But some sort of a pilot program that we can all agree on.
Councilmember Divine, I would support that if we were to do it with definitely having some sort of reflective or flashing light associated with it.
Yeah, I.
And do it in phases, prioritizing perhaps areas where we've had pedestrian fatalities. You know, perhaps also the streets that are close to schools or areas where we'll be having children possibly return too soon.
Or they have no sidewalk.
And then, as you're doing it with phases, take those signs, A-frame signs, that you're not using in those areas and use them to replace the ones that are damaged and until we see how it's received and then we take it from there.
Could I?
Mr. Batman, yes.
Yeah, I think, this isn't something that we necessarily have to decide today. And there's some, been some good ideas here. I think Councilmember Najarian's idea is interesting and and the idea about, you know, having something reflective is interesting, the idea of doing a pilot. Maybe maybe staff could just take this back, take the comments that we've made today and come and 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 come back to us like in a month, perhaps, with some, maybe some, some, you know, having done a little bit more investigation and seeing what's available that would meet some of the the objectives that we have here. Because, right, I mean, we don't, we could push this out a month and and it's not any any great harm, except we do have some of these signs around that are looking pretty dilapidated. But I think that, I I think there've been enough good ideas that maybe it's worth coming back to this.
If, Mayor Gajian.
Yes, Mr. Golanyan.
Member City Council, if that's the direction of the council, we'd be more than happy to take your comments and suggestions back and do some more research as to the pros and cons and whether it'd be feasible to do a pilot program and bring a report back in in a month or so.
I would support that. And there is clear consensus, apparently none of us like the Miami Beach signs. We don't want palm trees in the other roads.
Yeah, right.
There's some progress.
So do we need a motion on that?
Mr. Garcia, do we?
If if the request, the consensus is, is just for staff to go back, take the comments that the council members provided and bring back a report, we we don't, won't need a motion on that.
It's like re-study the issue, right? And also, I want to look at the liabilities that we will be facing with because of these signs, how it can put us in difficulties at a later time. I want to be on the record that I'm worried something will come up and we somehow will be liable for injuries or death.
Well, we'll make, we'll include that in the report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so, what we do now, nothing?
Now, unless there's any other discussion, go to the next item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll go to the next item, please.
Eight C, Human Resources, regarding establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the city of Glendale. One, resolution GCA and GCA confidential classifications. Two, resolution GMA and GMA exempt classifications.
Thank you, Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, this item pertains to eight new, establishment of eight new classification titles, seven in the police department and one in the fire department. And I just want to emphasize that the establishment of these new titles doesn't mean that we will be adding headcount to the number of employees we have in this organization. It's just merely a new title for these classifications. I'm going to turn it to Matt Doyle, our Director of Human Resources, for the report. Chief Lanzus and Chief Pavolitis are also here to respond to your questions, if you have any.
Mr. Doyle.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before you are resolutions addressing newly established classification titles within the GCEA and GMA employee groups. As the council is well aware, anytime there are changes to job classifications, salary adjustments, or the establishment of of new job titles, we are required to amend the existing resolutions covering the the affected employee groups. In this instance, we are establishing eight new job classification titles as a result of organizational changes in both the police and fire departments. As Mr. Golanyan said, we are not creating new budgeted positions, nor are we adding to the the overall headcount. These classifications will be filled by transfer or promotion of existing staff, with the exception of the position in the fire department, which is a reallocation of an existing vacant position, and that position will be recruited for from the outside. The classifications include the following, and I'll start with the police department and the criminalist series. Police department is proposing to reorganize the Verdugo Regional Crime Lab, combining two distinct job series, the forensic series and the DNA lab series. These will be combined into one rather lengthy job series titled criminalist, and it'll start with an entry-level position of criminalist technician, then it'll go up to criminalist one, two, three, four, and all the way up to the five level. This action will result in really a more effective use of the staff. Employees will be cross-trained, so they'll be able to perform more expanded duties. They'll also be able to assist, you know, this will be able to assist in their career growth and development by learning, learning new tasks. Also, within the police department, the proposal is to establish a new classification called the Police Chief's Adjutant Assistant. Again, this is a new title working out of the police chief's office on community outreach, media relations, social media, press activities, and other related duties. Again, this is a reallocation of an existing vacant position. Moving on to the fire department, the newly proposed classification is called Emergency Medical Services Nurse Specialist. This individual will be a key medical advisor, trainer, and educator for the department's paramedic program, the EMT program, as well as the EMD program, that's for the dispatchers. Currently, these services are provided through a contract with the UCLA Center for Prehospital Care. Now, they do a great job, but we do need a full-time resource in-house to better meet the department's needs relative to the increased call load involving medical incidents. If approved, Human Resources staff will work with both the police and fire departments in the ensuing months to place the, to place the appropriate personnel into the classifications through either transfers, promotions, or in the case of the fire and EMS positions, through an outside recruitment process. If you have any questions regarding this item, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, I have a question.
Also, Chief Pavolitis and and Chief Lanzus are here as well.
Okay, tell me about Police Chief Adjutant that we had before, didn't we have before? Okay, Chief Pavolitis is coming to answer my question. I remember Mr. Tom Lorenz was, that was his title years ago, wasn't he?
Mr. Mayor, Member Councils, Carl Pavolitis, Police Chief. We still do have an adjutant. Many people obviously remember Sergeant Tom Lorenz. It's currently Sergeant Christian Hotman, but there have always been other people in the office that assist with this. Those positions, one person retired, the other person needed to leave the city for personal reasons, and so we have those vacancies. This is an opportunity to change the position and adjust salaries, but there's still a need for other work within that office. It's more than a one-person job.
So is this, costs us more money by changing the title?
No, this one actually costs you less money by changing the title.
How it costs less? What happens that it's going to cost?
In 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 looking, in looking at the jobs that are there, because this, this, this person helps handling with film permits and and other and other things, social media that goes on in the office, but looking at the market, we think that we can fill this position successfully at a cost less than the position title that was there before. It used to be a police services assistant. Now that was in the position, this will be a new, a new position.
Are, through these changes, are we recruiting more people?
I would expect this will be an internal promotional opportunity for people, so it'll be a promotion for some people, but we think we can effectively do it with with a reduction in salary.
So you're not gonna get new recruits? So you're not gonna get new recruits to fill the old position, those who will occupy these positions, so their old position is not gonna be filled with newcomers?
Let me just make sure I'm being clear. The positions that used to be occupied were Police Services. They are vacant. There is nobody occupying it. And so this will be a new, this will be a reclassified position with a different salary range. So it will end up saving the city a little bit of money. I expect that it will probably be filled from other positions with within the department. It'll be a promotional testing from within the department and the city.
Okay. All right. Is there any other question from Chief Pavolitis?
Mayor, I do have a caller on the line.
Okay, let's go to the caller.
Herbert Milano, you're live. Herbert, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor Agajanian, Member of South City Council. My name is Herbert Milano. I have a question with regard to the budgetary impact. What is the short-term budgetary impact in terms of what it will, the impact will be for the next fiscal year in terms of salaries and pensions? And what is the long-term implication of these changes having to do with the expected pension and and benefits that will come in the future? Thank you.
Mr. Milano, we usually don't answer the callers, but anybody can answer this call.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we anticipate a very minimal impact on this on this process. And it's a little hard to say what that impact will be specifically, but as an example, in the the newly established Criminalist Series, where the majority of these transactions will involve lateral transfers of employees from one title to another. Essentially, as I said earlier, we have employees in 2 existing series, 1 involving forensics, the other involving DNA, and they'll be, again, majority of them will be lateral transfers at the very bottom of of one of the series, and I believe it's at the Criminalist 2 level. After this act is put forth, we will probably have some promotions involving, I believe, 2 members of staff, and that'll come in the ensuing months. It won't happen like right away, but that would be the only even marginal cost on this is is on the Police Chief's Adjutant Assistant. As the Police Chief has said, this classification is a is actually a downgrade of an existing vacant position that that paid higher, and so we're we're filling this position at a lower level. As far as the the Emergency Medical Services Nurse Specialist, again, we anticipate saving upwards of $80,000 on this particular situation because we're we're taking an existing managerial position of an emergency services coordinator and and swapping it with with this one. In addition to that, we're obviously going to be saving the the cost of the contract that we currently have with with UCLA. And there's some other transactions within the 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 Medical Services Section involving the reallocation of a sworn position, which would again reduce the cost. So to answer the questions, I don't, I don't believe there'd be a major financial impact by any of these transactions.
Mayor, I do have another caller on the line.
Let's go to the next caller.
Ms. Valentine, you're live. Go ahead.
Yes, hi, I I have a question, and I may be out of line. The speed, from Mr. Garcia, Michael Garcia, the speeder, when he gets stopped, isn't this a misdemeanor and needs to be prosecuted in criminal court?
I'm sorry, I guess this question is not related to this item.
Oh.
If you wanna later call.
Well, the Police Chief was there. I wondered what he knows.
I know. The Police Chief is not here to answer all the questions which we have in the city.
You're absolutely right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling, however. I appreciate your call.
Thank you.
Next caller, please, if there is any.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Thank you. All right. So is there somebody who wants to move the item?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Kasakian.
In in reviewing this, I see the consolidation, reduction in some of the positions, but I do think that, you know, in terms of the question of what will be the first impact of this, I I do think we need, in the future, we need to have a better range in order to answer that question, or we can provide a range, because we know what the salary steps are. We know what position is being added. One question I have regarding the Criminalist position is that is that we're combining positions to create the Criminalist title? Is that correct, Mr. Doyle?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kasakian, we're we're combining 2 job series into 1. So in in currently, we have a forensic job series which consists of.
That's fine. So my only question and concern I have is, given how sensitive and how specific the tasks are related to DNA and forensics, is the requirement education-wise and and experience-wise being affected in any way in combining these into creating this new title?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kasakian, yes. And what we've seen is there's a tremendous amount of overlap in the 2 series. And and so we've had to look at the the job descriptions for both in in looking at the combining this this series together and actually bringing that before the Civil Service Commission in order to to do so. But due to the overlap and due to the, you know, ability to really cross-train people and really enhance their skill set, that that's in the process of occurring right now. And again, we think it'll be a great benefit for the organization as a whole, as well as these employees, as far as their marketability and skills.
I I understand that, but in terms of the actual technical aspects of the job, I mean, I know that our DNA specialists are highly educated, college-educated, they have degrees, they study this. There's new research that comes out related to DNA and forensics. Are we not requiring the Criminalists to have that level of education and expertise?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kasakian, I we're not reducing any of the those requirements. And I I know we have, the chief is on the is is there as well, and I believe Catherine Nguyen, who is currently the the head of the DNA Lab, perhaps one of them would want to answer the, you know, the specifics of of the requirements and, you know, the the various professions in each of these 2 existing series. So I'll I'll defer to one of them if possible.
Chief? Did you hear the question, Chief? Did you get the question?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Kasakian, so the the job description broadens, but it will still require anybody working in DNA. You still have to meet the FBI minimum requirements. This will allow us to though to cross-train because in addition to DNA, we also have our fingerprints, our normal forensic crime scene processing, and we also do do computer forensics. And if Catherine, Dr. Catherine Nguyen, if you have anything to add, you can certainly add at this point.
Mr. Kasakian, was that?
I don't know. I don't know if I'm receiving quite the answer. I mean, is this opening the door for people with less training and education to promote into a position or into a new classification, thus eliminating the need for a a college degree in DNA, forensics, or the sciences that are applicable to this position?
No, in order to work the DNA, you would still have to have the the degree, and the the job classification should allow that that breadth for that to occur.
That's that's all I need to hear. Thank you.
Okay, let me one more time ask. By doing all these changes, I don't know, Mr. Doyle will answer, your Police Chief will answer this. So our cost will be less by changing these classifications? I'm just trying to understand why we are doing this and what's the benefit of it? If briefly, somebody can tell me again.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to say the the costs are necessarily going to be less. Really, the the what we're looking at is a reorganization of of these these various operations. And again, in the in the the case of the position in in Fire, we anticipate some savings in addition to, as well as the Police Chief's Adjutant Assistant, there will be savings in that as well. In the Criminalist Series, most of those are going to be lateral moves over, which would not increase the costs. There is an exception where we do anticipate at the Criminalist Level 2, we'll probably see some promotions that would occur later on involving people within and either the DNA or the Forensic Series into those jobs. That would be the the only marginal cost. So on balance, I would say it's it's about as 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 flat as possible if you were looking at a fiscal impact here.
So it's flat? They are not saving anything as far as the cost is concerned?
Yes.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be 8D, City Attorney, regarding consideration of findings regarding Appeal of Design Review Board's Approval of Design Review Board Case Number 2004770, located at 1248 Corona Drive, continued from December 8, 2020, December 8, 2020, 1, 1221, and 29, 2021. Motion denying the Design Review's case and making findings in support of thereof.
Okay, I guess, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
2 would be motion remanding the Design Review case to Design Review Board for further consideration to reduce the size en masse-ing of proposed home with directions. 3, resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project at 1248 Corona Drive. 4, motion to sustain the Design Review Board's decision to approve the Design Review Board application with conditions.
Thank you very much. I have to recuse myself again because of apparently conflict that I have. Am I right, Mr. City Attorney?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, this, you received a campaign contribution from one of the applicant's consultants.
All right.
Okay. So acting as a pro tem, I will handle this item. Are you good, Mr. Kasakian, on this?
Mr. Mayor, I'm as good as I can be. You know, I received the list of additional contractors, I believe, was on this item a few days ago from the City Attorney's Office. I'll be honest with you, I haven't had a chance yet to review my campaign contributions list to see if there's any additional conflict. And I would like to consult with the City Attorney on a couple of legal issues on this item. If it's all the same to my colleagues, I would like an additional week to catch up on it, because I would not want to participate in any deliberations this evening and find out that, because although, you know, at first glance, I will say at tertiary glance, it doesn't look like any of the company names are familiar, but I do want to make sure and be 100% certain before I decide to move forward with it, unless there's any issues.
So just as explanation, the applicant just recently completed the disclosure form that we usually get well before a decision. In that disclosure form, he indicates who his principals and contractors and subcontractors are. A lot of times, it's not it's not specified as to the individual connected with a particular company. You just get the name of the company. So I think that's what you're referring to, Mr. Kasakian, digging back and seeing.
Yeah, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. If it's all the same, just because we do run the risk of if I do participate and we find out that there was a contribution made from any of the individuals associated with it, it would essentially nullify the whole proceeding if I if I'm not mistaken, Mr. City Attorney.
Correct. There there's always that that risk. And and I would note that, you know, given that the report's already, and we can certainly push it a week if council's amenable. And I would note that, you know, you could participate, Councilmember Kasakian, as long as you you watch the tape of the prior of the actual public hearing and all that. But yeah, if so, it's it's up to the council to decide whether or not to continue it for an additional week. And I would note that overall, the the agenda is a little bit lighter next week than it is tonight, so certainly it's feasible. And I do, you also have a couple callers, but I think initially, if you want to decide whether or not to continue or not, you can take the callers on that specific issue or or deliberate further.
Ms. Devine, Mr. Brotman, what would you like to do?
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with that, too.
And and I do understand that this has been delayed enough times. I do apologize. But, you know, in in doing due diligence, I I ask for just one additional week. I mean, obviously, it can be done in the next day or so, but our next meeting is next Tuesday, so it will have to be delayed a week, and I apologize ahead of time for that.
No problem. No problem with that. So it will be our intent to make a motion to continue this for 1 week to check for, double-check for conflict. If we have some callers, just so the callers know that that appears to be the way we're going, but we invite you to address council on this item regardless. So, Mr. Jimian.
Ms. Valentine, you're live. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi. I am surprised to see that this case is, I thought that was all resolved and everybody got became came to their senses. And now I think there's a lawyer involved before even a problem has been come up out of it. But why why am I calling? Mr. Najarian pointed out this huge massive house on the top. It's on a cliff. The house has 4 corners. It has 4 legs. Now take the chair and cut off the 2 back legs and and see how safe that house is gonna be standing there. Okay, so this is my comment.
Thank you.
But I'm I'm really surprised that that now we have a bar association going against the professional findings. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Next speaker?
Alyssa Favella. Alyssa?
Hi, I'm actually the applicant, and I just wanted, well, I guess it's moving to next week, but obviously I had some comments regarding my project because it's it's taken so long. And, you know, we we feel that the house is not massive. It's just 3 bedrooms, and it's sitting on the hill. And so we we feel that this is a regular house, that it's not going to be so massive. And I would like to state that the draft findings were denied, did not address the issues raised in the letter previously submitted by our attorney. The house on Vista Superb at our 3 stories, I think from the street Corona Drive, and there are no bases to find the proposed project as massive as compared to those homes simply because it's wider. Our proposed home height is low and the home and the home is built into the hillside, and therefore the width is not at a proportion given the the lost line profile of the home. The current design allows for a 3-bedroom home that is within the average size of the neighborhood, and it would not be fair to acquire a much smaller home when it has been responsibly designed. I believe the community would prefer this to multiple homes on the existing lots as as currently exist on Vista Superb, but we'll be, we'll return next week to hear your comments if if you do move it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Mayor Pro Tem, that was the last caller.
Okay. And just to, and I will take a motion, but just so people realize where we were. Several weeks ago, there was a vote by council to to approve the appeal of the Design Review Board. It's a 2-step process. Once that vote is taken, the council needs to make findings. Am I correct in that, Mr. Garcia? Am I correct in that, Mr. Garcia?
Correct. And I would note, just for the record, because it has been raised, Mayor Pro Tem, that the decision of the council is not final unless the council adopts those findings. So you're correct.
Okay. Just so, in case people are wondering what we're doing. Therefore, there being no other speakers, would someone like to make a motion to continue this for one week?
I'll move to continue the item to March ninth.
Second by Ms. Devine?
Sure, yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Najarian?
Yes. Call the mayor back.
Okay, now.
Mayor, we're on item eight E, if you'd like me to read it.
One second, please. Yes, okay, go ahead, item eight E.
Correct, Mayor. Item AD Glendale Water and Power regarding progress on Glendale's clean energy future. One, motion to note and file progress report on Glendale's clean energy future with updates on demand responsive programs, commercial customer programs, Glendale proposed virtual power plant, electrical cost of services analysis, clean energy and storage at city facilities, analysis for 100% clean energy by 2030. Two, motion approving an amendment to the Lime Energy Services Company, commercial direct install energy efficiency program to allow participation by large commercial customers.
Thank you, Mr. Golanian, please.
Yes. Mayor Agajanian, members of city council, this is another one of those exciting endeavors that GWP staff and the city has undertaken. GWP staff has worked on these three contracts that you will hear about shortly. One of them for demand response has already been executed. The other one is at the final stage. This is for energy efficiency upgrades through commercial businesses that staff is asking for an amendment to expand it to larger customers. And the other one, that the largest of them all, is the virtual power plant, which we're very excited about, and that's getting near completion. We're waiting for a determination from CEC on just one item. Staff is going to cover some of the history of clean energy in Glendale, City of Glendale and GWP. I'm going to turn it over to Mike DeGhetto, the Acting General Manager for the introduction, and Mark Young and Craig Keenan are also on the call. They will have portions of the presentation to make. With that, Mike?
Mr. DeGhetto.
Mayor Agajanian, members of the council, my name's Michael DeGhetto, Acting General Manager for Glendale Water and Power, and we are excited to bring this report to talk about Glendale's clean energy future. And what we wanted to talk about, to provide context, is really to look back at our long history of supporting clean energy in Glendale and looking ahead to inform discussions on how we can continue to support and achieve Glendale's ongoing clean energy program goals into the future in a cost-effective manner. And this report's going to give specific updates on clean energy programs and projects that are in various stages of implementation. And this is really a group effort. So during the presentation, we're going to hear from Mark Young, our Assistant General Manager of Power Management, and Craig Keenan, our Assistant General Manager of Business Services.
Thank you.
And we're going to talk about meeting customer electrical demands. And when we talk about demands, we use that word to mean more than one thing. It's the amount of energy that customers use, and we also talk about it, maybe like our peak demands on our system, which is like the rate of energy consumption. We're going to talk about how we and the city adopted goals on the renewable portfolio standard, how we've worked to meet those goals and exceed them. And then we're going to talk about how we've helped customers conserve and what some of our existing programs are, and then our, say, our net energy, meaning entering solar programs, and the impact those energy efficiency programs have had on retail sales, which kind of shows how those programs are working. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Young right now to start off on the presentation.
Thank you. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Michael, did you turn on the PowerPoint presentation?
Well, I did, I was sharing my screen. Let's see.
I like your flowers.
Those poppies are in my front yard, they're native plants.
Here we go, thank you. So Glendale Water and Power has a strong, has long supported clean energy goals. Two of the examples that we have here is in 1931, Glendale was one of the original members to participate in the Boulder Canyon Project, commonly referred to the Hoover Project. In 1969, GWP participated in the development of the Pacific DC Intertie Transmission Line that goes up from the northernmost part of Oregon, DC, a high voltage DC line that comes down into Silmar. We were also early adopters of the renewable energy goals. Next slide, please. This slide shows GWP's significant progress in developing its renewable energy portfolio. In 2003, city council adopted GWP's first renewable portfolio goal of 20% renewable energy by the year 2017 with a stretch goal of 23%. In 2010, CEC disallowed large hydro from its calculation from the RPS, and even without this large hydro, which was Hoover, in the portfolio, GWP reached its goal of 20% by 2013. Next slide, please. In our most recent report to city council, we were proud to report that RPS is now at 35.8%, and we're well on our way to achieving 60% renewable by 2030 and 100% clean energy by 2045. City council recently approved the Eland Solar Project, which would add another approximately 10%, and the Open Mountain Geothermal Project, which should add another 11% to these numbers. We're very proud of what we've accomplished so far, but our work's not done. GWP is continuing to pursue additional renewable energy projects through its partnerships with SCAPA. And I'll turn it over to Craig to continue.
So, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Craig Keenan, Assistant General Manager of Business Services. What we're looking at here, the next three slides will talk a little bit about our energy efficiency programs, our local NIM solar programs, and then we'll have an interesting graph that shows what we projected our sales to be in 2003 versus what they actually are. So let's just go right into this first slide. We've been offering financial incentives for solar and energy efficiency since about 2000. We've invested over $46 million in energy efficiency programs, and about $18 million in local solar projects. Since 2001, our energy efficiency programs have averaged about 12 and a half gigawatt hours in first-year savings and just under 2,000 gigawatt hours in cumulative life measure savings. Next slide. So as far as local solar programs, in 2002, we became one of the first municipal utilities in California to offer solar rebates for people to put solar on their homes. In 2007, installed our first city-owned and operated solar system at the Glendale Community College. And today, we have about 20.7 megawatts of installed local solar, generating over 27.4 gigawatt hours in local clean renewable energy. This slide is basically, it's just to give us an idea of where we could have been and where we are now, and I'd like to think that our local solar and energy efficiency programs had a lot to do with this. If you see in 2003, at the lower left there, we were projected to grow about 1.5% a year through 2017, and if you extend that out to 20, then you're at about 1,366 gigawatt hours in annual sales. Well, you can see in 2009, the result, like I said, of our programs, state policies, a number of things that started to impact sales back then, energy efficiency, and since then, our sales have been declining about 1.2% a year. So I just thought this was an interesting chart because it kind of shows the effectiveness of energy efficiency in NIM solar on retail, so it's not just for Glendale Water and Power across the state. Other utilities are seeing the same impacts. Next slide. So I'm going to turn it back over to Mark, he's going to talk a little bit about our proposed repowering project, the EIR, Clean Energy RFP, and a few other items, and then I'll talk about some clean energy programs after that. So, Mark?
Great, thank you. Before we get into the clean energy programs and the work that we're doing, I'd like you to give a quick background on the Grayson Repower Project and the Clean Energy RFP. In 2014, GWP staff began working on the repowering project, replaced the old units at Grayson. In 2018, GWP presented the Final Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, for the natural gas-fired generation repowering project that was to replace the aging generators. The proposed project, which is shown in this slide, is the 262-megawatt repowering project with the four gas turbines from Siemens. Next slide, please. The April 2018 city council meeting, we were given direction to have a 90-day pause so that GWP could look for alternative methods to further reduce the thermal dependence at Grayson. In May of 2018, GWP issued a Clean Energy RFP, and some of the requirements was, it could be as small as one megawatt, but it must be, the energy must be delivered to Glendale's border. We had 36 proposals. In July of 2019, GWP presented the Integrated Resource Plan. Next slide, please. The Integrated Resource Plan is a planning document that will guide the utility through at least 2030, and I say at least because we're still looking past 2030, but the requirement by the state requires that the plan go to 2030. The work that was done during the Integrated Resource Plan resulted in 75-megawatt, 300-megawatt hours of energy storage, bulk energy storage, 93 megawatts or four worksilla engines of reciprocating internal combustion engines, and 50 megawatts of distributed energy resources, which include energy efficiency, demand response, and the virtual power plant. We're presently in the limited notice-to proceed phase. Part of those things is site studies, which include environmental and geotechnical, conceptual designs, which are functional requirements and site arrangements, environmental studies of air noise and health effects, and updating alternatives within the existing environmental impact report. On December 15th of 2020, Glendale City Council Meeting directed staff to a few alternatives, and the newest one was the refurbishment of eight A and eight B C units. And I'll pass it over to Craig.
Okay, so in the next few slides, I'll talk a little bit about Franklin Energy, Lime Energy Efficiency Program, then Mark will cover the virtual power plant, then it's on to the electric cost of service analysis, and then Mike DeGhetto will close it out with the GWPL story from solar development and the 100% clean analysis. So let's go to the next slide. So as we discussed earlier, the Franklin Demand Response Program is a four-year commercial and residential demand response program. The residential portion is, we call it a smart thermostat program because that's how we operate our, get the demand response from the residential customers. And we also have an online marketplace. The cost for the contract is just over 7.6 million, and then plus, there's a little bit for rebates for the PPC program is for the marketplace portion. By year four, we're hoping to have 10 megawatts of demand response capacity, and that'll be delivered during 15 peak load events per year. Next slide. So the residential smart thermostat program, and it will include individually metered small commercial, they're similar to residential. There's two ways you can participate. If you have a smart thermostat, we'll give you an incentive to sign up. If you don't, you can go to the online store, and we'll provide $100 rebate towards a smart thermostat. I will also add that you'll get a $50 incentive each year that you successfully participate in the program. The commercial program targets large customers greater than or equal to 50 KW, and basically we'll audit their facility, we'll go with the, go around and identify either manual ways or automated programs, which they could reduce demand during an event, and the customers will be paid an annual incentive for participation. The online marketplace, as I mentioned, is for energy efficiency products. Customers can go there and buy lighting and things like that. Go to the next slide. So the DR season will be June to October, a maximum of 60 hours of DR per year, 15 events. Events last about four hours or up to four hours. Again, the residential is automated, controlled by software through the smart thermostat, and the commercial DR could be automated if they have a DMS system or through manual options. Next slide. We've already contracted with the company to provide this. We had a formal kickoff in January, and during that kickoff, GWP and Franklin staff developed a detailed schedule that included plans for marketing and implementation. We are on track to launch for customer enrollment on April 5th. Next slide.
Excuse me, Sharon.
Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, I just want to ask, before we move on from Franklin, so I'm just thinking about this in terms of, let's say, residential customers. So I pay, not I pay, I'm receiving $50 a year to be part of this program. What am I giving up?
So what you're giving up is you'll be asked to let us control your thermostat up to 15 times a year. Now, what that means is, we call an event, we'll go out to the people enrolled in, whatever your thermostat is set at at that moment, we will adjust it upwards, up to four degrees. So if your thermostat was at 72, we'll go out and move it up to 76, and it could be there up to four hours. So it's not like we're turning off your air conditioning or anything like that, we're just adjusting the temperature.
Right, so how does it work? So let's say I'm somebody that keeps my thermostat at 78 degrees normally, but somebody else keeps their thermostat at 76 degrees. So I'm getting, I'm getting hit pretty hard then if I'm already at 78 and you're going to put me up to 82. Seems kind of unfair.
Well, it can seem that way, but you're used to a certain temperature, so I would think moving it up four degrees, you know, your comfort would be a little bit less. So, I would think moving it up four degrees, you know, your comfort would be a little bit less. Somebody who constantly has it at seventy-two, they're used to that temperature. So, going to seventy-six, they might feel the same, same way. It's, it's much better than turning off the thermostat.
Right.
I guess, I guess, a game system, if you knew that you're going to have an event, you could put it at seventy-two instead of seventy-eight. But generally, it works out that four degrees is enough to get us the demand reduction.
Uh-huh, and you're saying this can happen fifteen times in a year. How long would it last?
Up to four hours.
Up to four hours, okay.
That would depend on how long Mark wants it to go.
Okay, and generally, these would be, you know, hot summer afternoon evenings, I take it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to continue on that line. Those who have, first, they have solar system in their house. How will impact them this situation? They already have the solar system.
Well, they can participate. We'll still, we would adjust their thermostat. It would all depend on when the event occurred. If it occurred later in the day, after, say, four or five o'clock, when the sun's not quite as high in the sky, you know, it affected differently than if we called it, say, at one o'clock in the afternoon. But we have, by law, we have to offer the program to all customers. So, solar customers participate just like anybody else.
Okay, one more question. Do I tell you that what temperature I'm going to have? Or you look at that second what my temperature is? Because that's a big difference. I will tell you, I keep it seventy-two, but I'm keeping, let's say, seventy-eight. And you say, okay, seventy-two, he said, so we raise it to seventy-six, but I never use seventy-six. I mean, or you, at the moment, you will see what my temperature, I set it, and you go four degrees higher. How it works?
Yes, yes.
So, you look at my temperature, not that I will, not that I will tell you ahead of time that I'm keeping on seventy or seventy-two. That's not what you will consider it. You will look at, at that second, what temperature I have in my house set at seventy-seven, let's say, and you raise it four degrees. Am I right?
Yes.
No, you're saying, yes, making me such that it's not clear yet what the process is. I'm sorry to say that.
If I could, maybe if I could help answer that. So, part of this will be to have what's called a smart thermostat, which will be able to monitor over the internet. And we'll be able to see what your temperature setting is. And the computer system will make that adjustment.
So, that specifically, I go and bring it lower to seventy-two, or maybe I won't. I will keep it at seventy-six, and it's not that hot, so I keep it seventy-six. So, but I told you seventy-two, so that's not the case then. You will look at what's at that.
It's not what you tell us, Mayor. It's not what you tell us. It's what your smart thermostat is set at.
Okay. Mary? Let's continue, thank you.
Are we ready to go to launch? Okay. So, for the Lime Energy Efficiency Program, we had brought this to City Council back in October. At the time we presented it, it was limited to business customers at or below a hundred and fifty KW demand. Normally, we call them small to medium customers. Program is going to ramp up over seven years. The energy efficiency measures were going to last about twelve and a half. We expected to ramp up to thirty-five thousand megawatt hours a year by year seven. And the contract was eighteen point nine million. Next slide.
I'm sorry, here, can I ask you? So, you have a contract for seven years with the business owner? Is that what you're saying, or twelve and a half years? What is this, seven?
No, we have a contract with Lime Energy Incorporated.
Right.
Yes.
Oh, oh, I see. So, you have nothing to do with the business owner. You are talking about the company you have contract.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Next slide. So, we've had extensive conversations with Lime. In fact, up until last Thursday, we just had one last Thursday, and we finally came to an agreement. Basically, what we're proposing tonight is that we open the program up to all business customers. This slide says the split would be two-thirds small, medium, one-third large. But at our meeting last Thursday, we basically set it at sixty percent, plus or minus a few percent for small business and forty percent for large. We will get up to thirty-six thousand five hundred megawatt hours by year seven. That's about a four point three percent increase. And the not exceed amount of the contract is actually going to be reduced by five percent to about just under eighteen million. And we hope to launch this program in May. So, that's, if we have any questions about Lime?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
If I could, I know at one point, we're discussing liquidated damages in the contract so that they would be on the hook for delivering these energy efficiencies. Did you nail that down in your last conversations with them?
Yeah, we, we basically, there is a, there is a liquidated damages. It's capped at a hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred. And, you know, that's where we settled on that.
Okay, so there is certainly some incentive for them to deliver the savings, the energy savings that they've signed up for.
Oh, absolutely.
It's not just the best efforts basis.
No, because Councilman Brown, they'll, they want, they want the seventeen-nine is what they, and so they're going to go out and do, do the work because they want to get paid. Plus, we do have the liquidated damages. It's, you know, it's not a big amount, but it is, it is something.
Do we have also?
This is, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. I would just conclude by saying, I think, I'm glad you added, you're adding business customers to this. I think that was the right move. And I'm looking forward to seeing this program get launched.
Do we have any special circumstances, force major, that they can be able to deliver? Do we have something like that, that they can say, this is a disaster or something happened, so I cannot deliver? Do we have such a clause in the contract?
I, is, is Christine on the line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, there are strict, going to be strict termination provisions in the contract. So, if they fail to live up to what they've guaranteed, then we will have the right to terminate. We don't have to stay in deal for seven years.
Okay.
So, now we're moving to the Sunrun Virtual Power Plant, and I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. So, a little recap, we've seen this slide before. So, this is the Sunrun Virtual Power Plant. And what it is, is solar generation on top of single and multifamily residences. And it's also attached to a battery. So, we're anticipating about thirty-four hundred single-family home, multifamily houses to participate in this, in this project, which is considerably large. Next slide, please. So, a little recap of what the program is. The capacity, the battery capacity is twenty-five point twenty-five megawatts for two hours. We're not saying fifty and a half megawatts because you can't get the fifty and a half megawatts over the one-hour period. It has to be over at a max, at the fastest it could be done is over a two-hour period. So, we're referring to this as a twenty-five point twenty-five megawatt capacity. The solar production was increased to thirty-seven point three megawatts. So, we anticipate more megawatts being produced out of the solar. This virtual power plant will provide us with energy, which is the solar production capacity, which is the discharge of the battery, and renewable energy credits. Next slide, please. I believe that this slide was also a rerun, but I like to explain what a virtual power plant is going to do for us. And this is a sample of the historic peak in September of two thousand, September one of two thousand and seventeen. And just keep in mind that the bars are not complete energy needs to the city. They're twenty-five and thirty-seven megawatts. So, if we look at the blue bars that are going down, that's about when the sun is going to start to shine. And the generation, which is the bars that are going down, the solar will start to produce. And as it starts to produce, it will start to charge the battery, which is why it's negative. So, it'll start to charge the battery. And as the battery gets full, then the solar will start to be in its heyday. So, it'll be eleven or twelve o'clock in the afternoon. So, we'll have maximum solar penetration. And that solar will then be put onto our electric distribution system. And it will follow the sun. And as the sun starts to set, you'll see that the blue lines start to get smaller. Unfortunately, that's not coincident to our peak. Our peak is something that happens later in the evening. And so, what we do is we start to discharge the battery. And you can see the red bars are the discharging of the battery. So, as we start to discharge the battery, we can essentially take that three hundred and fifty megawatt peak and make it closer to, closer to three hundred. And you can see that the green dashed line would be the effective peak. But as you know, it's only a few, only a couple hours of discharge. And at that moment, then the battery will be discharged. In this example, it was at seventeen hundred. At seventeen hundred hours, there's no more battery. There's also no more solar. And we would have to wait for the next day to go ahead and recharge the battery. But I think this is a very good example of what we're looking to do with this concept. And you can't do it on an individual house basis. It really needs to be done in an aggregate way, thirty-four hundred installations. Go to the next slide, please.
Before you go, I just want to understand the idea, not this graph, but the idea of when I want to work with Sunrun, the property owner is saying, okay, you can put solar panels on my roof, right? Or you are not involved with it. City of Glendale is involved with it? There's a landlord.
The city of Glendale.
Wants to participate, wants to participate, let's say, right? Who's involved? The us or the landlord and the Sunrun?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, our, our relationship is with Sunrun. Sunrun will go out and have a relationship with the multifamily and single-family owners.
Okay, but do you have an idea, like, the Sunrun going to go and say, I can, I will put as much as solar panel I want on your roof? Or how it works, if you know how it's going to work? Do you know how it's going to work as far as Sunrun is concerned? Or we don't know, we don't care?
Well, I, I think we do care. What they'll do is they'll, they'll put solar panels on the roof, and it won't be dependent on the load of the house because the solar will be, the solar production that will be used from that house will go directly to the Glendale distribution grid.
No, but the landlord also, landlord also will use from that same electricity, right?
No, sir.
Oh, it comes to us and then we sell it to the property owner?
Yes, sir, with the exception of the battery. So, one of the incentives that the customer has is that there's going to be a battery installed on their house. And that battery is going to be of sufficient size that they would be able to, in normal instances, have twenty percent of that battery. So, in the, in the event that there was an outage on that distribution system, the solar would no longer be, be pushed to the distribution system. And the customer would be able to use that solar battery combination to keep their house energized. So, they would be able to keep their refrigerator on, they would be able to keep their internets alive. And they would be able to, at the minimum, have twenty percent of the battery. And at the maximum, if it was a long enough duration and that battery was charged, say, for instance, at, you know, at fourteen hundred, in this example, at fourteen hundred, we're starting to discharge the battery. If we have an outage at that particular time, the customer would be able to enjoy one hundred percent of that battery, and they would be able to keep themselves in power for a very long time.
Okay, in case of dispute between something happens as a result of this solar system that Sunrun apparently owns and it's somebody's house, is there any liability for us that if a problem arises among the company and the landlord? Are we involved with it?
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not the liability person, but I know somebody who's very good at it, and she's online. So, I'm hoping that Christine Martinez could actually help you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the contracts that we have with Sunrun will provide that they have to indemnify us for any of the liability that would arise from that relationship between the customer and Sunrun.
I see. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Batman.
Yeah, so, so, Mark, just going back to what you were talking about with the battery. So, if I have this system on my, on my house, on my roof, and I get disconnected from the grid entirely, let's say a substation blows up near me and the, and the whole neighborhood is out. And I have this system. Now, if that battery is full, I have access to all that energy, right? I can just keep powering my house right through that, that outage? Is that right?
Yes, sir. That, that's the, that's, that's the huge benefit to entice the customers to use, to, to use the roof. There's also, there's also a small payment that we do, that we provide them. But the, the, the big benefit is that during outages, like we had at Rossmoyn, they would be able to experience energy. Now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want them to go ahead and turn pool pumps on. I would like them to conserve so that they can elongate the use of that battery for them so that they wouldn't then subject themselves to an outage because the battery died. But they would have, they would have subject to, they would have enough energy to supply their house for a very long time.
And now, let's say that outage went on for, for two days. So, the next day, the sun comes up. Will that charge that battery again?
Yes, sir, and I'm sorry, I should have made that clear. But we, we talk about it, we kind of forget these things. So, if the battery is dead and the sun starts to come out again, then the solar panels will charge the battery, and it would also supply energy to, to the customer. So, in the, in the event that it's a multi-day outage, you would have that benefit. And if you didn't drain your battery full, you would be able to have constant electricity throughout the outage. If you manage it right, you should be able to.
Right, okay. All right, thanks.
So, we are, over the course, over the past few months, we've been busy working with Sunrun on the details and logistics of the program as well as following the City Council's direction to negotiate the best possible deal for the city. So, we've agreed to terms. Now, we just have some logistics. So, without getting into too much detail, you can see that the overall cost of the program went from approximately two hundred and forty-five million over twenty-five years down to two hundred and twenty-eight million for the energy price of the solar production. That, that equates to about eight point eight percent reduction. For the battery component is about eight point three percent reduction for a total contract price of about a six point nine percent reduction. So, we were very happy that we got to this point. And as a result, they've increased the amount of solar capacity. So, we're going to get thirty-two point, to thirty-three point two percent more megawatts installed. So, essentially, they're going to put more solar panels on roofs, which would give us the ability. the ability to have more solar production during the day.
And, and Mark, may I ask a question?
Ms. Devine.
Mayor, thank you. Would that 13.4% be added to our amount of renewable energy?
All the energy from the solar is supposed to be renewable and we'll have that discussion in a minute.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So we've been supporting Sunrun in its efforts to have the program one-line diagram approved by the CEC, which is needed for proper payment and the acceptance measures for energy capacity, which will directly affect the guarantees that we're working on. The project also needs to be recognized by the CEC for PCC1 eligibility. We all believe that it fits the CEC regulatory guidelines, but it's a new program for the CEC. So in the meantime, we have to wait for the CEC to make a ruling. GWP's team of substance, subject matter experts have been working hard with Sunrun's technical team to work through all the operational and technical details that we'll need to have in place in order for the program to be successful. And lastly, we've been working with our legal team and Sunrun's legal team to get the agreement drafts prepared and negotiated so that we can present the final agreement to city council for approval.
Okay, so can we ask questions on this?
Ms. Devine, yes.
Thank you. So what happens, what's the impact if the certification is not secured from the CEC? Do we still go forward with the project?
Well, I, I would hope so. But there is a component of payment to, from Glendale to Sunrun for that product. So we would go back to them and we would have to negotiate price. If we're not going to get the product for eligibility, then we, we would come back to them and ask them for pricing considerations.
So the price could go up or we'd get less product for the price?
So the PCC1 eligibility would affect our, our rec requirements going towards 60% renewable. It wouldn't affect the fact that we are getting cleaner. But I fear that the price would go down for a less quality product in my, I would hope that the price would go down for a less quality product.
But, but you, you feel, or do you feel confident that this will happen? I, I know that you stated that this, this whole virtual power plant project is so new that they, they may just be taking longer to make up their minds?
I, I think that's what's happening with the CEC. And, and I think that's, that's normal occurrence with the Energy Commission. But I think once they see and they, they apply the litmus tests that require, that are required to determine whether a project is PCC1, they'll see that it, it is. And more importantly, once they, once they find that it is PCC1 eligible, it will open up the floodgates for, I would say, Sunrun and other competitors to do these exact same virtual power plants with other utilities throughout the country. And it would, it would definitely be a big boost in the renew, in, in the environmental aspect of cleaning up our, our electric grid.
Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are you making that case with the CEC?
Sunrun is making the case presently because it's not my project. Sunrun is, Sunrun is the driver, but we're supportive if we're needed.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, do you have any comment? No. Okay, continue, Mark, sorry.
I, I have some comments before you move on.
Mr. Batman.
Yeah. So I mean, this is no surprise to you because I've said this many times, but I'm, I'm very, very concerned about the slow pace of this project. It's, no, it's been, it's almost three years from the time that we, we went out with an RFP, not quite, but getting there. And, and I know, you know, I know it's complicated. I know you've got a lot on your plate. But we're, we're at this point where, I mean, I know this, that we've got this CEC issue. And I want to see what, what, how we can help and how our legislators, Senator Portantino, Assemblymember Friedman, what, what we can ask them to do to help weigh on the CEC to unbreak this, this logjam. But I'm also really concerned about the negotiations on the contract terms and conditions because we were told in the last report that contracts would be coming to city council in the April timeframe. And last I, I heard from you, it's now two or three more months to finalize those contracts. And, and, and that's really concerning to me. I think it's concerning to our whole relationship with Sunrun and, and just kind of our standing in the market. And, and so that's, that's kind of a general comment, but I, the, just, just to be clear, the contract, I know that three contracts and the complicated one is the purchase power agree, or the power purchase agreement, sorry. Where does the power, has the power purchase agreement been drafted?
Councilmember Brotman, there's a council, this is, and members of council, this is Christine Godinez. The power purchase agreement has been drafted. We're reviewing it internally with Glendale Water and Power. There are some significant gaps in the contract, which are related to the CEC approval and business terms that need to be worked out. For example, the California Energy Commission needs to approve what's called a one-line diagram of how the metering configuration is going to be laid out. So without that, we don't know where the energy is going to be paid for, measured, guaranteed, pretty critical terms when you're working out a power purchase agreement. But rest assured that we are working really, really hard to get this done with Sunrun. There, as you mentioned, there's three agreements. We are drafting two of them. Sunrun is drafting the third. And we're actually going to be meeting with Sunrun this Thursday to work through our plan and figure out how can we get this done as absolutely quickly as we can. So I want to assure you that we're not waiting, you know, for CEC approval to happen and, and we'll wait and see. In the meantime, we're working just as hard as we can to get these documents completed.
But, but is it our attorneys that drafted the PPA or did Sunrun draft the PPA?
It's our attorneys that drafted the PPA.
And, and there are big gaps in it? I don't understand it. Did they do a bad job or, or what?
No, they, they have a very, very good template of a power purchase agreement, but there are business decisions that need to be made and factual information that needs to be included, for example, related to the one-line diagrams and, you know, key points to make the deal work. So they can put together the best of templates, but we need to fill in this information, which some of it is waiting on the California Energy Commission's decision.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess two things. One is I would, I would just ask that you absolutely prioritize all, any and all negotiations on the terms and conditions that you're able to negotiate on now. I'm sure there are many, many issues apart from this one-line diagram CEC issue. And, and get that stuff nailed down as quickly as possible. And, and I, I would like to try to help in any way I can, and I'm sure the rest of the council would like to help in any way they can, to lean on the CEC, if that's the right term, or just make sure that they, you know, they understand how important this is, maybe at the political level of the CEC, if it's getting stuck at staff. But I think we're in a critical place now. And I think that without saying too much, I think we, we are going to be running into problems with, with, with our, with our partner's ability to, to kind of wait this out. So I, I, I'm very concerned.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Garcia.
I, I've not been involved in the day-to-day with this as Ms. Godinez and the staff from GOP. But just to reiterate, you know, this is, this is a priority from our office and I know from GOP staff as well. And I would just add to echo what Ms. Godinez said or add to it, which is to say, I mean, this is a new product as well. So everybody's taking a look at it the first, for the first time in terms of the scope of this, the size of this, all the different business pieces that we have to deal with as a municipal utility and working with CEC. And while we, we understand and we recognize it's a priority, at the same time, we do not want to rush into decisions and, because that's how mistakes are made. So we, we hear the council that this is a priority, but we, we still have to do our jobs and make sure we're doing the due diligence to make sure that the city is getting the deal that it's trying to bargain for.
Thank you. Okay. So Mr. Young, you want to continue?
I'm going to hand it back off to Craig.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, city council members, I'm going to talk a little bit about the electric cost of service analysis that we're currently working on. Back in October, we presented preliminary rate impact findings for the clean energy programs. And that was based on our 2018 Electric COSA. At that time, we presented some concerns with respect to that COSA. I mean, the 2018, the, the document or the, the model was based on 2017 data produced in 2018. Since then, we've had the COVID, our sales have declined, we have to look at cash reserve impacts, a number of different things that go into the COSA. Next slide. So at that meeting, we were directed to perform an updated electric cost of service analysis to refine what rate, rate impacts are, if any, would come from the clean energy programs. We contracted with NewGen Strategies and Solutions to complete the study. It will be conducted in four phases. The biggest phase is the first phase, the financial forecast. That's the model where we put in all the inputs, our capital, our projected O and M costs, a number of different things. I received the, the first version of the model today that I'll be working on over the next week or so to refine. So let's go to the next slide. Key variables in, in this model are going to be the capital plan, how much are we going to bond? How much, how long would a bond be? What would be the interest rate? How much we would want to spend in pay-go capital, you know, pay-as-you-go capital? What are projected O and M and supply costs we're going to be over the next five to 10 Additionally, since the 2018 COSA, we've been in various conversations about new bond eligible capital projects that, that are being considered for pay-go, that we could bond, additional battery storage, the new Glendale switching station, the Glendale-owned solar and storage program, which Mike will talk about here in a few minutes. But our goal, my goal is to get the, the model finalized in the next couple weeks so we can run some different scenarios, present the results to city council and get direction. So I'll turn it over to Mike DeGhetto.
One question before we go to Mike. What's the duration of contract between us and Sunrun? Was it 25 years or shorter or longer?
It's 25 years.
I mean, but what worries me before and worries me now, is there any clause about, you know, this technology is moving rapidly, going so fast, day by day, things are changing. Is there any clause about these changes or, this might be 15 years later, maybe like her old system? Do we have any clause to protect us? Yes, Mr. DeGhetto.
Mayor Agagianian, this is Mr. DeGhetto. I, I would say, you know, this, this contract is related to purchasing power and Sunrun providing us power. So it's really not related to the type of equipment they're using, if that makes sense, right? We're paying for energy. So it's really, it's really up to the vendor to be worried about that sort of stuff.
But we are not involved with it. They have to provide with new system or whatever they have to do.
You know, it's up to them to meet the requirements of the contract.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so another program that we're working on is city-owned properties and analyzing putting solar and battery storage on those properties. We're going to come back next week with permission to award a PSA to a consultant to help us with that, to assess the properties and really work on a more traditional design bid-build type of project for those properties. You know, instead of just hiring a, a company to come in and do a design build sort of thing. And, and then we've also got a separate consultant on board to help us do structural analysis and seismic evaluation on the civic center parking garage and to work on plans and specifications for that to put solar on that garage. And then, you know, we're working through the, we have a consultant on board doing the 100% clean energy analysis by 2030. And we're going to come back to council, we're planning on coming back March 30th if we have that information available, to provide a full report on that. And really, you know, now we, now we're open to more questions.
Okay, this system will cost us something like 225 million? Is that what it is? How much this system will cost us, anything?
Mayor Agagianian, which system are you referring to?
I mean, this entire, what we are, Sunrun and others.
The virtual power plant.
Virtual power plant, yeah.
That'd be 228 million.
28?
Yes.
28 million. And in few years, when it gets older, it's obsolete, let's say. You guys said that we are not involved with it. They have to come up with new system?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that, that's correct. They're required to meet certain guidelines and it's very strict as to what they need to perform. And if they can't perform that, they need to either upgrade or add more systems. But it's totally on them and it, it's, it takes the onus off of Glendale, which is one of the reasons why we need to have that metering one-line diagram to make sure that we can monitor pay so that we can enforce the guarantees.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Mayor Agagianian?
Yes.
If I may just add one item that I, I'm not sure if the guys covered it or not. It's the 100% clean by 2030. Staff's going to present a report to city council on March 30th.
Okay. You did.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to also make a comment.
We have seven callers, I guess.
Correct.
Let's go, Ms. Devine, can I go to the callers then? We'll come back because they are waiting for such a long time from beginning. Let's go to the callers.
Yes, I just wanted to talk about the rebate program.
Ms. Devine, go ahead.
No, it's okay, Mayor. I want to talk about this whole rebate program, but I can do that after the callers.
Okay. Let's go to the callers then.
Fine.
Jane Patel, you're live. Jane, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Agagianian and council members. My name is Jane Patel. I've been a resident of Glendale for 16 years and I'm a member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition. I'm calling to voice my support for all of the city's clean energy programs and the city's progress on these programs so far. I'd like to highlight two points. I encourage council to approve the motion to expand the line program to include large customers and ask council to direct staff to prioritize wrapping negotiations with Sunrun so that we can get our virtual power plant up and running, hopefully to help mitigate some of the high heat events this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Next caller, please.
Donna Chung, you're live, please. Donna, go ahead.
Donna Chung, can you hear me? Donna? Donna Chung, can you hear me? Mayor, I'll put her on hold and then move on to the next caller.
Let's go to the next caller, yeah.
Kate Unger, you're live. Kate, can you hear me? Kate Unger, you're live. Kate, can you hear me?
Yes, I do hear you.
Go ahead, Kate, you're live.
Thank you very much. Hello again, Mayor Agagianian, members of City Council and staff. Kate Unger from the Glendale Environmental Coalition. And, you know, we are all very interested in what's happening here. We really like to thank the City Council and staff for doing these update reports. They help a lot to keep residents informed. My G E C colleagues and I are really happy to hear about the many positive developments discussed in the report. It's been great to see the city embrace the idea that clean energy can replace thermal energy for Glendale's power needs. Since 2017, G E C has been challenging the city to think bigger and go further into clean energy, and these projects show the city is up to that challenge. G E C wants to keep challenging the city and pushing it to do even more than what it has already accomplished. So I want to pose new challenges to build on the current project, which I hope the council and city staff will embrace. We need a next generation of clean energy projects, and we need to get them in the pipeline now because these projects take time to go live, as we've seen. So far, the only other G W P local clean energy projects moving forward are on city-owned properties. The city needs to get new projects on private property to maximize the full local potential for clean energy. Please issue new R F Ps, pursue public-private partnerships, and C E C funding opportunities and incentives and policies that foster private projects and clean energy for lower-income residents. Glendale should move forward on all of these fronts, so that's the challenge I put to you. Please keep pushing for a clean energy future this evening and in the coming months and years. Let's make Glendale a national leader and a model to be proud of. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Unger.
Donna Chung, can you hear me? Donna? Donna Chung?
Let's go to the next caller and we'll come back.
Monica, you're live. Monica?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Agagianian, City Council and City Staff. This is Monica Campagna, Glendale resident and member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition calling. Thank you, staff, first of all, and council for your ongoing support of the clean energy programs, and I'd like to also express my appreciation for the ongoing updates, which have been very helpful. I have a few additional points beyond what Kate mentioned. I hope council will direct staff to prioritize wrapping up the Sunrun program as well as soon as possible so that we can begin to harvest that energy this summer. G E C is ready to provide over 350 leads to Sunrun for people interested in the program. Considering the time it takes to bring new programs to fruition, I do hope also that G W P will bring forward new R F Ps within the next few months, such as a feed-in tariff program directed to commercial customers. L A is robustly pushing its Fit Plus program, and businesses seem to be enthusiastically enrolling, and they are enjoying the monetary benefits while providing L A with valuable local clean energy. Perhaps we can unroll a fit program here that works in tandem with our system upgrades that we're doing, opening it perhaps zip code by zip code as the system is ready for the extra energy. Perhaps this can be planned out at the same time that the owner's engineer firm studies our system for the city-owned solar and storage projects that's coming forward for your attention next week. One last point regarding canceling the residential solar solutions program. I personally think it makes sense to continue at least refunding the permit fees, something to reward the homeowner who is willing to make this investment in producing their own energy. But if the rebate program is curtailed, I absolutely think that G W P should not just point folks to the Sunrun program, but should fund a new clean energy public benefits project that could help the city gain additional clean energy beyond the virtual power plant. For instance, this could be a great opportunity to fund something to help our most vulnerable elderly and disabled people, for example, who live in multifamily housing. Perhaps G W P could consider some kind of expansion of the virtual power plant just for specific locations to provide incentives for additional storage so that those buildings, for certain, be able to keep their vital health equipment running, their refrigerators on, their elevators able to function, or some other program that could benefit critical needs sites or members of the community who have limited access and finances to fund projects on their own. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Campagna. Next caller, please.
Elise Kolfion. Elise, you're live.
Hello, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Agagianian, members of City Council. My name's Elise Kolfion. I'm a member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition, and I join others in thanking G W P and the City Council for these clean energy projects that are coming forward. I'm calling about the Sunrun project, the virtual power plant. It has taken a very long time and is still taking time, and Glendale Water and Power is trying to obtain these renewable energy credits from the California Energy Commission in a novel arrangement, and the negotiations appear to be delaying the whole project. We need this clean energy badly, and negotiating over credits from the C E C should not hold it up. Please make sure this project moves forward quickly. The Glendale Environmental Coalition really wants to reach the city's goal of 100% clean energy by 2030, and this will help us get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kolfion. Next caller.
Benjamin Ipekchion. Benjamin, you're live.
Good evening. So the case against Grayson hit the news press, rest in peace, in 2017. Let's put that in perspective for a second. Just about three years ago, the city of Glendale was on the cusp of spending $340 million on capital projects to power our city with gas. That's pretty far from being in line with this long history of implementing clean energy programs. I mean, this pat on the back the report's giving the city is actually embarrassing. The fact that this report starts out by saying it has two purposes, and that the first one is about how to show how great Glendale is in promoting clean energy, it's utterly tone deaf, and I don't understand its place in the report. Why don't we just call it what it is? Things are probably moving too slow. Negotiations are probably taking too long, and at this rate, we might not hit our 2030 target. And let's not forget, the city's about to implement these critical programs. At the same time, we're also replacing the city manager and the director of G W P. Timing's not great, and I'm incredibly concerned about a rocky landing. One thing that the city could do, aside from 86-ing the Irrevell and Adda Boys, of course, will be to create more transparency. Like, I'm an engaged community member in this city, and this is the first time I've seen any real movement since October on the clean energy program. I mean, why is that? That is too long, and my confidence is lower than it would have been if there'd been more communication between October and March. Thank you for taking my time.
Thank you, Benjamin. Thank, next caller.
Herbert Milano, you're live. Herbert, go ahead.
Mayor Agagianian, members of the City Council. I appreciate very much the direction that the city's taking towards renewable energy. I'm a strong advocate of clean energy, and I'm not a member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition, but I do come to you with experience as a systems analyst and in implementing complex systems. And what I was hearing today made me significantly nervous. One of the key questions that I asked, I've asked my customers in the past, or my company did, is what can go wrong? And if we don't address all of the issues where a particular program can go wrong, we are going to be on the bleeding edge of this technology. And this is, I'm trying to bring a level of realism to the complexity of complex systems. And I think back on the wireless electric meter program that the city did back 10 years ago, and I have yet to see a thorough evaluation of how well that program went or how over-budget it went. But I'm concerned about the cost and the significant cost that we are about to bear for a program where we may be one of the leading installers or implementers of this of this technology. I encourage you to be prudent about this, even though I know the urgency of moving to renewable energy. But a lot of the things that I heard tonight just made me very nervous, then the whole idea of rapid negotiations are like a Pandora's box of problems that are going to hit us very hard years from now when none of these decision-makers will be on the employment of the city of Glendale. Besides, none of them ever gets, shall we say, accountable to bad decisions that would have cost us tens of millions or hundreds of millions of dollars. You need to be prudent, and that is my message, that our history with some of these programs from the G W P have eventually cost us dearly. And my recommendation is that you see how other cities larger than Glendale have been successful at implementing these programs, if any, but being on the leading edge is being on the bleeding edge. So be prudent, and that is my recommendation to you in regard to this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other caller?
Alec Barsov. Alec?
Yes, hi, good evening. Thanks for taking the call. This is Alec Barsov, newly appointed sustainability commissioner. Just wanted to compliment G W P and council for moving in this direction. I'm really excited about the proposals that were mentioned in today's meeting. I'm so excited that I'm a little bit impatient at the slow pace in which things are moving, but I'm hoping we can move quickly on these projects and get these in the ground as quickly as possible. As somebody who lives very close to the freeway, I'm very well aware of our local air quality and local air pollution, so I'm really excited that Glendale is demonstrating to its people how the city is taking efforts to clean our air and provide local sources of energy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barsov. Next caller, please.
Donna Chung, can you hear me? Donna? Donna Chung? Donna? Donna Chung, can you hear me?
No. Do we have any other caller?
No. No, Mayor, that was the last one.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody wants to, Mr. Brothman?
Yeah, I have a few things here. One of them is I want to respond to some of the things that Mr. Milano said because I think he's misunderstanding some things. So first of all, he calls these rapid negotiations, in fact, the negotiations have been going on well over two years, so I don't think that's rapid. But more importantly, there's nothing leading edge or novel about the technology. This is all standard technology. I would maybe, maybe Craig or Mark could comment on that. This is all standard technology. What's innovative are the commercial terms and how the technology is being used and how the batteries are being managed centrally to deliver, to deliver energy when we need it. So I don't see that there's, you know, technological risk here. It's kind of groundbreaking because of the way it's being structured, not as a net energy metering type of program, but as a, as a power purchase agreement type program where we would get those clean energy credits. So I think, I just wanted to make that clear, and maybe when I'm, I have a few other comments, maybe when I'm done, if I'm wrong, you know, Mark or Craig can tell me I'm wrong, that there's some, some leading edge technology here, but I don't think there is. I wanted to just, I actually wanted to ask a question because this thing with the renewable energy credits keeps coming up, and I guess my question is, you know, we're, we're working on this 100% by, well, we call it 100% by 2030, but we should probably just call it Glendale 100 because we don't really know, you know, what that date is going to be. But anyway, I, you know, I've heard previously, you know, we're talking about, you know, by 2030, at least getting into the 90% range of clean energy. And if that's the case, that means that I assume we're going to be well ahead of where we need to be under the state mandate. State is saying 60% renewable by 2030, and I imagine we would be much higher than 60% renewable by 2030 if we're on the path that we're on. I understand that when we're talking about 90-plus percent, we're talking clean, so that includes some things that are not in the renewable category, but I don't want to create a lot of confusion there. The bottom line is, I think that if we continue on the path that we expect to be, we're going to be well ahead. So I guess my question is, what do we do with these recs? I mean, we're making a big thing about making sure we get these renewable energy credits, but it seems to me we're going to have a surplus. What is our intention? Are we looking at selling these and monetizing them? Is that why we want them so badly? Or are we just going to bank them? In which case, why are they so valuable to us? I guess that was probably a question of Mark more than anybody.
For Mark. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Brothman, no, we don't, we don't anticipate selling them. That's not, that's not, that's not what we're trying to do. But we do know that S B 100 started out as a 100% renewable bill. So if it was 100% renewable, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to even use these megawatts because they would not be renewable. And if they are renewable, then we need to get credit for them because the 60% can go to 70 or 80%, and it just is a wise move. It's not like we're not going to get the recs, so therefore we don't have to pay the price. So it's, it's a balancing act that we're trying to get what, what is owed us based on the program. But I don't, I don't believe that there's going to be a subsequent reduction in the program if the rec is not there.
Okay, so that's interesting because I haven't heard you say that. So in a way, you're, maybe what you're saying is you're anticipating the state actually upping the ante, and you want us to be prepared in case that happens. That's at least one thing it sounded like you're saying.
Well, we always have to, we always have to be prepared for that, but I mean, we also have to realize that the projection on the 2030 report is go find project A or go find project B. Those are fictitious projects, right? So we have to find these projects. So if we have a project in our backyard, why wouldn't we utilize that project to, to get what we need in order for us to meet the requirements of S B 100?
Okay. So potentially, if we do everything that we want to do, and we do it, and we do it well, we might have those recs sitting unused, and we would just retire them. We wouldn't, we wouldn't take them out to the market and monetize them. Is that what you're saying?
Councilmember Brothman, if I could, if I could just mention something, you know, essentially with the Sunrun project, we're building a power plant, right? We're paying to put a clean energy power plant on the roofs of various buildings, and that's what's going to contribute to our 100% goal and meeting that goal. Like, we wouldn't, I guess, pay to build an off-site solar plant if we didn't get that credit.
I know, I understand that. But I mean, the original concept was a, was a net energy metering concept in which, in which, that's how it was originally proposed, that's how we originally looked at it until we, we shifted it, and I, and I think this is probably better. But in that case, you're not getting any renewable energy credits, but you're reducing the denominator of the amount of retail sales that you're, you know, the amount of load that you're, that you're supplying. So anyway, I don't want to, I think, I think that's, the answer I got, I think, is pretty clear. I guess, you know, all things being equal, we want those credits, they have value. But I'm hearing that we're not planning to monetize them, and I'm hoping that we're in a position where we end up just retiring them because we don't need them, and that would be a good news story, right? And could you just, could you just respond to the, to the Herbert Milano, the thing I said about this being a bleeding-edge technology?
I see, I see that there's a little bit of truth in both statements. The, the concept of having solar panels and batteries is not, is not a new technology, but the coordination in the software of coordinating 3,400 installations and operating as one installation is somewhat new. Is it, is it brand-new? I don't think it's brand-new, but it's relatively new, and it's, it's not only to be able to operate that 3,400, but to be able to operate that 3,400 with your other portfolio to make sure that the load meets the generation. So the complexity of being able to manage it is, could be So the complexity of being able to manage it is, could be troublesome also. So it's not only the software.
Okay, fair enough. And just a few other things. So a couple of the callers, or at least one of the callers, mentioned solar and storage on commercial or on, on, on private properties. I've been asking for this for a long time. I know that even before I came on council, Frank Quintero was asking for this. What is it going to take for us to go out to the market with a, another RFP, if that's what it takes, to start getting the ball rolling on putting solar and storage on commercial properties, just like we're doing with Sunrun on residential and multifamily, you know, single-family, multifamily residential? We've got tons of commercial rooftops. We need to be out there hitting them. And if it's going to take, if it's, if it's taken three years from the RFP to get the Sunrun program up, you know, if that's the kind of runway we're looking at, we need to get the ball rolling. So I feel very strongly that we need to make those moves as well as working creatively to get demand response programs with our large, you know, top, top 50, top 100 customers. Because when, when, you know, we get these, these heat storms, you know, we go to them volun, and, and we ask for voluntary, you know, load reductions, right? And, and they deliver them to us. But we need to be able to bank on that. So we need to programatize those arrangements. And I know, I know I've talked to you about it. I know Craig has said, you know, keep just resource constrained. There are just so many people at GWP. And, and, and if that's the case, I think council needs to figure out a way to step up and get you the resources that you need to move this along. Because the cheapest energy, the cheapest clean energy is the energy that doesn't get used, right? And if we can get these large commercial customers to start to shift demand, time shift demand, then we can save a lot of money on generation that's going to be used just for those peak events that are going to happen infrequently, right? So I just think we absolutely need to get the ball rolling on both of those things, large account, demand response, and solar and storage on commercial.
Okay. Are you done, Mr. Brothman?
I'm done, thank you.
All right. Is there any other question, or we go to roll call?
I'd like to make a comment or two.
Ms., Councilmember Devine?
Thank you, thank you. I wanted to comment on Mr. Milano's comments as well because, you know, he said, you know, we have to be very careful and we have to look at what can go wrong. And, and I think that's what the negotiations are all about, and I think that's what Christine is working at and, and our legal department is working at, making sure that we are protected and that things do not go wrong. And I would think that negotiations like this can't be rushed. We're going to get it. I was told that we're hoping that the Sunrun project is up by this summer. So I have, I have high hopes that, that it will get done. But, you know, there, our staff is doing a lot of work and difficult work, and I, I don't believe in, I don't believe in rushing them at all. So Christine, just continue, do a great job as you usually do, and I know this project will come to fruition in the best way possible. What I wanted to bring up was the solar rebate program, and I know in the staff report, it was mentioned that we were thinking of discontinuing that program. And it's, it's my, my thought that the more solar we have, the better. Do we, my question is, do we get credit for solar that is owned by the homeowner? Or do we only get these credits if Sunrun does it or if someone else is involved?
So the short answer is no, we do not get credit for the solar that's on a homeowner's property. When we first started this program, we had set it up to where we gave the homeowner a certain incentive if they, they just put in the system, and we gave them an incentive if they signed over the green rights to us. And so we were proceeding under the notion, you know, early 2000s, that we were getting the green rights. Well, the, the CEC said, no, you can't have them. So basically, if it's a NIM system, I think Mark might be able to clarify this a little bit. We might get some credit, but it's not like we get with Sunrun. With Sunrun, we are buying the renewable power.
Okay. Mark, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, Craig is right. We do get some, but the complexity of trying to manage everybody's solar system on their houses is way more work than the actual credit that you can receive for that. So we're, we're not going down that path.
I see, I see. Okay, but we can use the, we can use the funds for other projects, can't we, for, for renewable projects?
You're talking about the, what we would budget for the incentive program?
Correct.
Yeah, yes, we can use that for anything renewable, anything, energy efficiency. We can do low-income program. BBC money is for four different categories, and we would reprogram it.
Okay, okay. So, so that gives me a little bit more understanding about why we're, we're kind of directing our residents to go to Sunrun instead of doing it on their own.
I just want to add that it's for new customers. If they've already signed up in our program, and they've already put in an application, we'll honor that.
Right, right.
Once we go to the Sunrun, do we just want to transition?
Correct. Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Thank you for the answers.
Is there another question?
I, I just wanted to follow up on what Councilmember Devine was, was asking about.
Mr. Brothman, briefly, please.
Okay. Yeah, first of all, on, on those net energy metering, you know, situations like the homeowners with solar on their home, we don't get the credit, but it reduces the load. So it reduces the denominator. That means that there's that much less energy that we're selling. And so the renewable credits that we have apply to a lower denominator. I hope that makes sense. But also on the, on the issue of the public benefit charge and those solar rebates, like, I'm, I'm on board with the idea of ending the rebates for homeowner solar. I don't think it's really needed. Solar has come down enough in price that homeowners are, you know, it pays for itself anyway. But I have, I have two concerns. One is, if we're talking about pointing customers to the Sunrun program, I mean, that's okay. But there are going to be many customers that want to own their system, right? They're not going to want that Sunrun model. I want to make sure that we're not turning them away or turning them off, or somehow or another discouraging them from going and doing what they want to do. That's, that's one thing I want to say. And the money that we don't use for the rebates, I hope we can use for, you know, other types of programs, like low-income solar, maybe charging stations in multifamily apartment complexes and things like that, other things. I think that makes sense at this stage in the solar development for us to shift those resources to helping lower-income people take part in this clean energy revolution.
Mr. Najarian? Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think this, this idea of the virtual power plant is great. It was a great potential solution to repowering Grayson, as we were once considering. But I've got, and I want to thank the Glendale Environmental Coalition for calling in and expressing their point of view. Same with Mr. Milano. I don't always agree with Mr. Milano, but I, I do share some of his concerns on this. The PCC1 eligibility, I think, is critical. I think we really have to get that approved before we can, you know, because I think our whole, the whole purpose of this is to go renewable and to, one of the purposes, there are many purposes, but one of the, the main purposes is to get renewable energy credits. And it's clear to me, I don't know about the rest of the council, but the state and perhaps the federal government isn't going to stick to those standards that they've given us. I, I'm quite sure those standards are going to be accelerated, and we're going to have even greater responsibility to find renewable power. So, you know, I think it ha, we have to get credit for that as we do this. The technology, yeah, I mean, the technology is there. This is, this is proven technology of the, you know, photovoltaic cells and the battery storage. But there's, we're being asked to get into a 25-year deal. 25 years. Can you imagine what the technology is going to be in just five more years? And the problem is that the city of Glendale and our ratepayers are bearing the risk of improved technology, advanced technology, more efficient photovoltaic cells. We've already locked in the price. It says we're locked in at 13 cents a kilowatt hour, right? And you negotiated that. What's going to happen in five years, 10 years, if that 13 cents turns out to be a very expensive, a cost for, for kilowatt energy? We're stuck with that. And in particular, our residents are stuck with that. I don't know how fast technology is going to advance, but I know darn well it's going to advance. Energy is going to become cheaper. The photovoltaic cells, even if we have that type of technology, that might even evolve to something different. It's going to become more efficient, more powerful. The battery storage is going to become more efficient and more powerful. We're the ones who are bearing the risk for that. We're setting our pricing in today's dollars and today's technology. As it improves, Sunrun is the company, or whoever it turns out to be, likely Sunrun, they're the ones who are going to gain all the advantages of any increase in technology, and our ratepayers are going to be stuck, you know, driving a 25-year-old car at, at the end of the day, when they could be upgrading to something very more efficient, much more efficient. What happens? I mean, let's get to the legal end of it. What happens if there's more energy that is produced than we've contracted for? Is Sunrun able to sell that on the open market, or are we their exclusive purchasers? I think that's a very important question that we need to sit and answer. That energy is coming from our neighbors' roofs, from our roofs. Why are we going to give it to Sunrun, once they've met our, okay, we've paid Glendale their, what is it, 45,000 kilowatt hours this year? We're going to sell it on the open market and make some money ourself. I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if Christine and our legal team are thinking about it, but it's certainly something that needs to be considered. The cost of, the cost of energy needs to be considered. Are we obligated to get the Sunrun energy if it is expensive at that three, at that 13 kilowatt, 13 cents per kilowatt hours, and our residents can get it somewhere else on their own property or through other sources for cheaper? Are we stuck with that? Are we obligated to purchase that? So it's a new, I mean, it's a very, I mean, I, I like the idea. Don't get me wrong. I like the idea. But the, you know, the attorney in me and the, the very lay technologist in me says we need to look out for this, and we need to nail this all down and make sure that we obtain the energy we need. It's renewable energy. We protect our ratepayers from a white elephant that may be on our roofs in five or 10 years. Nobody knows where the technology is going. Nobody. Don't, you know, anyone that says that is, is not being truthful. I hope technology advances to the point where we don't have to worry about renewable portfolios. We don't have to worry about expensive energy anymore. We may be there, but I don't want to get strapped into a, you know, a 25-year-old car when everyone's driving Teslas. I don't want to be in a, you know, a carbureted gas guzzler when everyone's driving Teslas, as an analogy. So let's keep going. Let's make sure we do dot our i's, make sure we do consider all the different legal issues and purchasing issues and market issues and technology issues as we go forward. I love the idea of the virtual power plant. Let me get that out there. It's wonderfully creative and innovative, at least for me, maybe not for others, you know. But for me, it's great. But let's just be careful and, you know, guard and make sure that we're doing the very best for the city. If it takes a little bit longer, let's do it. I wish we had it today up and running, but these are all things we have to work out legally, commercially, technologically.
Thank you. Councilmember Kusakian, do you have anything to add, or I go to the vote?
I mean, what hasn't been said. The only thing I would just say is that in regards to Mr. Milano's comments, I know that some may have taken it a little personally or taken exception with his words, but I'll just say that he probably remembers, Mr. Milano was probably referring to other programs in the GWP where we were touted as being the first to smart meter implementation, which was a big, heavy upfront cost and was promised to be the be-all and end-all to all our problems. And we were supposed to recoup the costs in terms of savings in other areas. And I don't think it ever materialized as such and was a very heavy upfront cost because we were at the cutting edge of, of that technology. The one thing I would just say is that if it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. So I believe staff has gotten the message from council that, you know, the sooner we can get this done, the better. Not because it's important to any particular one of us, but because it's the right thing to do in terms of helping the environment during a very critical time in our planet. And, you know, we, we do our part as Glendale, and hopefully others will follow. And sure, it's a great idea. It's a good alternative to what, you know, part of the bigger plan of how we address Grayson's issue. And yeah, I generally support it, but I do want staff to do their due diligence to make sure that we get the credits that we're entitled to or that we will be entitled to. And also, it's a new day. A lot has changed since the November presidential election. There's a White House that hopefully is more supportive of these programs. So as dollars and programs become available and grants, I urge staff to add more work to your plate to keep an eye for any type of monies that we can receive from the federal government to help assist with this, to defray some of the cost.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I raised this issue before, months ago. This is great, and technology is advancing, and we are on right track, and it's evolving. But what I raised months ago, what has worried me, which Councilmember Najarian also alluded to that, I said, I cannot imagine to contract with Sunrun for 25 years. I was on the record before, and I want to repeat, that I have a solar system in my house. So I know that, and I'm a professional engineer, so I know a little bit about this technology. But things are going so fast, as has been mentioned here. It's like you're driving a car 25 years ago, and now, that's why I was pushing last time here, maybe we have to contract, have a contract for 15 years, then we don't regret. I have this problem that 25 years is very long time for this technology. It's rapidly changing, and I don't know where we are going. And I'm not sure raising the issue now is any, is beneficial now because I do not know how far we are, we have gone with Sunrun. But I wish we would have it 15 years, as I mentioned months ago, rather than to have 25 years ago. But I guess, where we are now, we are, Mr. Garcia, where we are as far as the contract is concerned, can't go back to any other, like 15 years or anything. Am I right? That you negotiated for 25 years, I guess, I mean, not you, but your department.
The GWP and legal have been negotiating. That, that's, that term is what we've been basing the negotiation on. Yes, sir.
For 25 years?
Yes, sir.
I'm worried that we will regret years later, but I guess there is no choice. Now, anybody wants to move the item?
I have two motions.
I have two motions.
I'll move the item.
Okay, is there a second?
All second.
All second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Ajimian, do you have the?
Green.
Yes, you have the second too?
Yes.
The roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, just want to thank the Mr., I don't know, they are still in here together, Mr. Young and Kieran for explaining all these difficult terms and ideas. Thank you very much. Okay, let's, what's next?
Mayor, we're jumping onto item number ten, which is reports and information. Ten A, environmental preferable, uh preferable purchasing.
Thank you. Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. Um, previously, Councilmember Kusakian had asked for a report on this item that also included local purchasing preferences. And uh staff had prepared and we issued a memorandum, a memo to council with that kind of uh information. Uh, Councilmember Kusakian had also made the great suggestion that it'd be a good idea to present these items at uh council meetings so that the members of the public would know uh what the outcome of that request was and, and it wasn't just shelved. With that, I'm going to ask David Jones, our sustainability officer uh to provide that report to you. Again, this is for information only. Uh, we will entertain questions, but we cannot uh take direction uh from council. But uh as Mr. Jones will explain, we'll bring back in the future another report with more detail and requesting direction from council.
So if I would say this is for information?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and um city council members. Let me see if I can share my screen. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm here today to provide counsel with information on environmental preferable purchasing. And the next step staff uh will be taking to prepare a port, prepare a report for city council. Um, I'll begin my presentation today with a brief overview of E P P programs. Um, briefly describe a current E P P program.
David, David?
However, most of my-
David, we do see a square on the monitor there. Can you remove that?
There is a-
Okay.
There's a big box, gray box.
Covering the word.
Is that better?
Yes, it's okay now.
Thank you. It looks fine.
Okay, um, most of my time tonight will be focused on next steps staff are taking to repair a port, outlining some key E P P components. Staff will be researching further. So as I go through the report, um, I'm not going to keep saying environmental preferable purchasing, so I slip over my tongue. So I keep referring to that as E P P. Um, so why are we doing this? Why is this important? Um, there's a greater, generally, there's a greater understanding of the connection between the broader social issues and purchasing decisions and the implementation of sustainable strategies aimed at reducing the environmental and social impacts of organizations' purchasing programs. Waste, emissions and environmental risks have been recognized as often been directly linked with the quantity and quality of goods and raw materials an organization buys. And generally, federal, state and local governments can use the clout of their buying practices to direct industry manufacturers towards making more sustainable products that are reasonably priced and do less harm to the environment and public health. The National Association of State Procurement Officers define E P P as environmental preferable purchasing or green purchasing is generally defined as purchasing a product that has a lesser or reduced negative effect or increased positive effect on human health and the environment and compared with competing products that serve the same purpose. E P P programs may vary in scope and sale, scale. That being said, the goal of an E P P program are to create a framework and provide guidance to purchasers on product performance, availability, price and environmental performance. Incorporating E P P in the procurement process considers raw material acquisition, production, fabrication, manufacturing, packaging, distribution, reuse, operation, maintenance and disposal of the product. As an example, environmental products tend to contain some combination of the following characteristics. They may contain recycled pa-, recycled materials, um recycled parts, remanufactured parts. An example of, of this would be a hundred percent recycled paper. These products often minimize waste. They may have minimal packaging or packaging that is recyclable or usable. And often, these types of products can conserve energy or water or other natural resources. Many E P P products, such as carpet cleaning products, janitorial paper products, um energy-efficient lighting and equipment and appliances are of equal or comparable cost, although not always. In addition, through the use of recycled materials, these products offer the added benefit of reduced toxic use and waste reduction. So that's a brief overview, just a general overview of E P P programs. So what's the city of Glendale current program? The city of Glendale's recycled products and purchasing program has been in effect since nineteen nineties. This program has worked to ensure that fitness, quality and cost be equal. Recycled, reusable products and other green products are purchased. Examples of this are purchasing of low toxicity cleaning products, purchasing of Energy Star computers, purchase of low emission vehicles, purchase of recycled content paper and the purchase of recycled oils for fleet management. So why are we doing this? As mentioned, the current E P P program has been in place since the nineties. The technology and availability of green products has advanced tremendously over the last decade or so. Cities such as Glendale are establishing more progressive sustainability programs. Best practices on E P P are evolving. And as mentioned earlier, the understanding of the connection between broader environmental concerns and the purchasing decisions is more evident. With that in mind, the E P, E P P project goals are to develop an E P P program that works for the city of Glendale. Including balancing price and environmental performance attributes of goods and services. Establishing procedures and practices to research products, plan and coordinate green purchasing programs and implement sustainability efforts. Establishing practices to avoid conflicting or confusing information that may create misconceptions about the quality and performance of environmental preferable products and services. Support the city of Glendale's sustainability programs and increase the use and availability of environmental preferable products. So what are the next steps? The next steps are for staff to research the following and come back to the city council with a report that details and outlines are following. Determining staffing requirements and financial resources required to implement an E P P program. Developing a sustainable procurement action plan for the coming one, three or even five years that prioritizes the city's efforts on product categories that are high spend, high impact, easy to implement and likely to lea-, yield multiple sustainability benefits. Review the standards and green certifications and third-party certifications that are out there to identify environmental preferable products and identify what works for us. Review the tools such as lifecycle costing and total cost of ownership and other assessment methods so we can determine those products and services that have the greatest environmental benefit and the greatest um cost savings to the city. And review contracts and identify upcoming environmental procurement opportunities. Finally, we need to identify staff roles and responsibilities in carrying out an E P P program. How would that work with our current structure and what would that look like? And finally, implement an annual tracking reporting programs so we can determine the success of any E P P programs that we may wish to implement. With that being said, I'm available for any questions that you may have. And we also have um Ashvin on, on the line too, who may be able to answer any specific best purchasing questions.
Is there any question for Mr. Jones? Our vice uh, okay, I guess there is. Mr. Jones, you explained it so great that nobody has any question at this time, so we'll get back-
Before I spoke too fast.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brot, Councilmember Brot.
I don't have any questions. I want to first say uh thank you to David for um a great report. I know a lot of work went into it. I can see that. And um it's, it's a great description of, you know, the benefits of, of an E P P and also the challenges. Um, the, the next step is um, you know, creating a, an actionable policy framework. And, and I, if nobody else wants to, I would like to request that we agendize the discussion of a possible E P P ordinance. Um, and uh I would suggest the following conditions, or not conditions, elements um that I think it should be a set of requirements as opposed to recommendations. Um, it should build in, you know, considerations for zero waste and extended producer responsibility. And um it should have a clear mechanism for ranking projects, uh products, I'm sorry, so that when we have products with different environmental attributes, we can compare um against uh, you know, costs. So we may have a product that costs more. How do we decide whether it's worth spending more? What are the environmental attributes actually worth? I think we need some kind of a, a model to be able to make those decisions. Um, and, and it should include not just products uh we buy, but also services we contract. So um if uh any of my colleagues would second that, I, I would like staff uh understanding that this is a very complex um set of uh, of tasks. Um, so it'll take some time, but I'd like to get the ball rolling on putting together an ordinance.
Okay.
Anybody else interested in doing that?
But, but should we wait for his, for the report that Mr. Jones is going to get us back maybe? Or concurrently with that or uh?
We will get back to it again. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, now-
Maybe I'm, maybe I don't understand. What's the report that's coming back? I thought um this was the report and we were gonna um make a motion if we wanted you to continue in, in developing an ordinance.
So we will continue researching and putting together what an E P P program will look like. And some of the, the things that you suggested, um such as ranking products, making sure, looking at E P R and zero waste. That will be all be part of the report that we will bring to city council. For you to provide us direction on ultimately how you want to go in developing an ordinance.
Okay, so there's no need for me to, to-
Yes.
To make any-
At this point, yeah.
All right. Okay, I misunderstood. My apologies.
Okay, uh, thank you. Now, uh, let's go to, do we have any callers, Mr. Ajimian?
Mayor, not for this item, but I do have a caller for oral communication.
Yes, this is, I guess this item is done. We, we just filed it. Uh, so we go to uh, to our, yes, to the callers, please.
Mayor, our next item is twelve oral communications. The discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. I do have a caller, mayor.
A or eight?
One A.
Oh, okay, let's go to the caller, please.
Ms. Valentine, you're live. Go ahead.
Yes, hi. Uh, thank you. I, I appreciate being A, giving the uh score of A. One comment, the, how will the Glendale ci-, solar Glendale city look like? Those awful cables, are they going to be underground or overhead? I'd just like to see a picture, somebody uh, and the smart meters, if you over, Mr. Kusakian, if you overpaid them, get the money back.
Okay.
L A had that program years before Glendale got it. Um, anyway, they, I, I'm calling about Tiger Woods. And I should have been in bed already. Uh, I'm calling about Palos Verdes City Council, the Board of Supervisors, those city departments, engineering for Harbor City, San Pedro. The way I see it, accident number one, no reaction from the city. At least police and fire would react. Yes, zero. Accident number two, no reaction or action from the city, county or state. Even the insurance companies should be obligated to collect data on dangerous roads. Reaction, yes, zero. Very similar, the city uh, took zero reaction on Chevy Chase and you let Paul die. Back to Palos Verdes now, accident number three on Hawthorne Boulevard. Action taken, increased speed limit to forty-five. Accident number four, number five, number six, number seven, number eight, number nine, number ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, plus it's uh not including the multitude of near crashes. What is the purpose for city departments? Who do they answer to? I'll vote for your business, you vote for me. So wh- what is the scope of duty? I think the scope of duty is do the roll call. So they, they need to be gone. They need to be replaced and hu-, uh held accountable. And I hope that street is closed down until the correction is made. I hope Mr. Tiger Wood did not suffer in vain. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have one more caller that just called.
Okay, let's go to the next caller, please.
Herbert Milano, you're live. Herbert, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. Um, it's now the beginning of March and I know that by next month sometime uh the city council will begin the process of conducting the study sessions to evaluate next year's budget. Or evaluate this year's budget in, in context of our constraints with regard to the uh the reduced revenues that the city has experienced. But these budget study sessions generally provide the public, it's been my experience by actually watching dozens of them, our prior year financial results adjusted to a new revenue or expense reality suspected in the coming fiscal year. And so often, the presentations drill down to a very narrow departmental expenditures that vary from the norm. But rarely do we get to see the overall objectives of the city in quantitative terms, even though in a way it is required by law. Let me give you an example. What are the population growth goals for, for the city for the next few years? And how is the land use planning is going to support those goals? These are the major directional objectives that I rarely, if ever, see the city council address. What areas of Glendale will be absorbing increased population? What are the impacts of infrastructure, open space, parkland required to meet those goals? Those questions are generally embedded into what are the city's general plan and the city and the plan's elements. The um, so how is the city going to meet the objectives for road repair, sewer, water, parkland needs, given the increased population expected or whatever that target that you're giving, if any? So what is the size of the population at or near the poverty level in Glendale? What city initiatives are there to address it? My point is that i- if you out, go through the process of creating a budget without addressing the major objectives that you want for the city, then the budget is isolated from your major goals. Tonight, we heard something very specific with regard to objectives in regard to renewable energy, for example, right? There is a goal ten years from now. And that sets up all of the elements necessary in order to be able to achieve it. So we have a plan. It's called the general plan and it is required by the governor's office of planning and research. Office of Planning and Research, and you have to submit it every five years with annual progress reports. And the one that I know the city pays attention to is basically the housing element, right? But you have the land use element, the circulation element, the open space element, the noise element, safety element, recreational. When do you address the major objectives for each of these? The elements, I don't remember a day when these elements were presented to the public by the City Council, addressing the major strategic planning objectives of the city. So how can you possibly make a good budget if you're not addressing the quantitative measures? I think it's a question that is relevant to creating a budget. If there are problems with regard to safety, with regard to police or fire or floods or other emergencies, then if you have a definitive objective to meet, then you can set a budget to meet that objective. So my suggestion is that the City Council really take a look at the strategic objectives, the meta-objectives of the city and see if the budget meets those objectives. Because in two areas that I've spoken to you about, insufficient parkland south of the 134 freeway, insufficient maintenance of the roads, and I contest that there'll probably be insufficient maintenance to capital improvements on the water mains, for example. These are critical quality of life issues that you need to address, but without a quantitative measure, how can you set up a budget? So it is my hope that the City Council can start doing this budget in a more, in a wider, more encompassing way so that it makes sense to the rest of the city residents of where it is that we're headed. But I hope that you don't spend 45 minutes, an hour and a half dealing with an item that is $200,000 in a city that is fastly approaching $1 billion in overall expenditures, right? So it is my hope that by April, that the city can begin really tackling the major issues of where are we going with regard to all these other sections of population and traffic and congestion and parkland and open space necessary. So those are my words of encouragement for the City Council to do it differently. Don't follow what every other city is doing, looking at the minutia given to you by the finance department and the way it's always been done in prior years. I think that we should be able to lead in a different way of doing governance and there are other cities that do it in the United States. So it is my hope that you take up strategic planning as a way of creating and conducting a true budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ajimian, do we have any other caller?
No, mayor, that was the last caller.
That's great. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. With that said, the meeting.
Good night.
With that said, the meeting is adjourned at 10:33 PM. Thank you. See you guys next week.